I'd like to call together our work session with our legislators. We're thrilled to be able to have this meeting tonight and especially with some of our guests who will be speaking about some of the needs in South County so that we can advocate. So with that, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the meeting is officially open. The date is January 14th and it is about 6:15. Just want to start with some introductions. If you feel comfortable doing it yourself, we'll start with Representative Tanzi.
My name is Teresa Tanzi. I'm state representative and I represent southern part of Narragansett as well as pieces of Peastale and Wakefield.
If you talk right into the microphone.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Dennis Algier. I'm the minority leader in the Senate. I represent Westerly, Charlestown, and part of South Kingstown. I'm happy to be here and look forward to working with you in the upcoming years.
Good evening. I'm Sue Sosnowski, state senator representing South Kingstown and Black Island.
Alaweli, South Kingstown Town Council President. And we do have a few legislators. Donna Walsh called me. She had a family member that was not feeling well. And Don Lawley is not able to be here tonight, but we are expecting hopefully Spencer Dickinson.
Hi, I'm Carol Hagan-Mackenty. I'm vice president of the Town Council.
Jim O'Neill, South Kingstown Town Council.
My name is Meg Claus-Achealy. I'm a member of the Town Council.
And Paul Donnelly, Town Council member, South Kingstown.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is a representation of having a rich dialogue about what some of the needs are here in South Kingstown. And it's not going to be focused on budgetary discussion because we know that the governor's budget is not out yet, but it's here to let our legislators know what some of the needs are. And tonight in the audience, we're fortunate enough to have Lou Jean Cola and some of his people from South County Hospital. So you are first on the agenda and if you'd like to come to the microphone, I'd like to engage in a dialogue on how we can better advocate for our hospital. Welcome.
First of all, thank you for inviting us here tonight. We appreciate it and thank you to the legislative representatives for attending and for being such supporters of the hospital over time. I want to introduce Eve Keenan, our Chair of our Board of Trustees. In addition to being Chair of the Board, Eve is a healthcare professional with extensive background in nursing and nursing administration and program, healthcare program management. So as you can imagine, she understands many of these issues as well as I do. And she's been a great partner. We think of ourselves as a doubles, isn't that the double steaming tennis? So she may have some remarks as we go along. So I think one of the main things I wanted to bring out for both the council members and the legislators is the tremendous amount of change that we're undergoing in healthcare. As you may have read in the paper or I think it was the Providence Business News, I think we are now the only independent hospital in Rhode Island. That assumes, of course, that Landmark gets purchased by Prime Health, which is the current bidder. So we're seeing in Rhode Island and in the rest of the country, a tremendous amount of consolidation. The board under Eve's leadership has been taking a very deliberate approach to evaluating what the best approach for South County is. And when I say South County, I don't mean the hospital, but the people who rely on us for services. Because that, we exist for the community. And the trustees are called trustees because they hold the hospital in trust for you and the rest of the people who reside down here. But clearly, there, one of the big issues we're going to face is whether or not we can continue to remain independent and/or whether or not we need to partner. And if so, what kind of partnership makes sense to support our ability to care for the residents of this community? And that is the board's focus. And they've repeated that over and over again. It's not what's good for the hospital or the, obviously, we have a great concern for the thousand people who rely on the hospital for their income. And we have great concern for the many others who are reliant on the income that the hospital brings into the community. But our major focus has to be the health and welfare and maintenance of health of the residents of the community. So that's our focus. And I guess I wanted to make the council and the legislators aware of the process that we are undergoing, which is basically taking a very hard look internally at how well we're doing, what are, how many people from the community rely on us for services, how many leave the community? And we can break that down by service so we know, you know, what percent of the babies born to residents of South Kingstown are born at South County, how many are born at Westerly, how many are born at Kent, how many are born at Women and Infants. We can do the same thing for cardiac disease, for orthopedics, et cetera. We have been very fortunate as a hospital over the last several years in that we have been able to not only achieve outstanding patient satisfaction, so we've been number one in the state for three years, and quality, and I won't recite all of the achievements in quality, but we've also, I think atypically in the state, been able to achieve a positive bottom line now for three years in a row. We think because of the changes, starting with Medicare, the most recent federal, the fiscal cliff solution held increases for Medicare to 1% less coding adjustments. So we're going to see, we're definitely going to see a gap between inflation in the cost of providing care and inflation in what we're paid. And the state, for many reasons, and I praise them for this, has basically capped the increases that we can get from commercial insurers, Blue Cross and United being the major players in this market. So I just wanted to provide that general background. And I could go into a lot of the other changes that are occurring that are going to challenge us. And they enter into, or they relate to, the need to consider a partner. I wanted to focus on four priorities for us in the interest of, you know, you're not having to listen to me too long like everybody at the hospital. And also so that we could leave with some understanding at least of what our legislative agenda is. So the first thing which the legislators are pretty familiar with is the disproportionate share program. And by that, I really mean two components. One is referred to as a license fee. It's really a tax. And it's a tax on our net revenue. So to the extent that we do better as a hospital and more of you use our hospital, we pay a higher tax. And last year, we paid a tax, I believe it's 4.5% of net revenue, I'm blocking on the exact amount. And we received back payments, so this is where the disproportionate share comes in, of 2 million less than the tax we paid. So we were what we refer to as net payers to the tune of $2 million. That was fiscal '12. That just ended, well, ended on September 30th. Feels like it just ended. So just to repeat for those of you who may not be familiar with it, we pay a license fee, which is in one part of the, one article in the budget, state budget. In a separate article, it defines what the state is going to pay to all the hospitals for the uncompensated care that the hospitals provide. And I have to say, we are very fortunate in South County in that we don't have a huge amount of uncompensated care relative to the hospitals in Providence. On the other hand, I don't think the program was ever designed to have Westerly and South County be net payers year over year, basically having those dollars going either into the state coffers or, because about half of the money ends up being retained by the state and the rest going to the hospitals that have a large number of share of uncompensated care patients. For fiscal '13, which began on October 1st, we were very fortunate and we had the support of legislative delegation to have a change in the way the program worked. And basically, what the legislature passed was a reduction in the tax for hospitals in South County. And we were supported by all the other hospitals. They agreed to this change. So we're paying about 40% of the tax or the license fee that the other hospitals are paying, the hospitals that are not in Washington County.
Was that about, if I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
Was that about a half a million dollars more?
It was, in our case, we would, had the program continued as it was, we would have ended up being net payers to the tune of $3 million. As a result of your changes, we ended up being, we will be net payers this year of $1 million. So we really had a $2 million swing, but saved $1 million relative to the previous year. Now, obviously, if, we're very concerned that that program continue. Because as other aspects of our finances get tougher and tougher, Medicare reimbursement going down, limitations on the increase in commercial payment, we need to continue to not, to only be net payers of $1 million. Obviously, we'd love to, you know, not be net payers at all, but we're prepared, I think I can speak for the board, in saying that, you know, we want to be good citizens and we think paying our fair share is reasonable. We thought 2 million was just an unfair burden on a small hospital and frankly, a small community like ours. So we're very pleased with that. We would urge the delegation in the interest of not placing another community hospital in financial distress. And frankly, you know, as I started out, community hospitals all over the country are in financial distress. We happen to have two in our state, maybe a third if you include Memorial, which is about to be, become a part of Care New England. And we're trying desperately and doing a lot of things under the board's direction to make sure that we are not placed in that situation. And this program could easily hurt us very badly if we're not able to continue the differential tax rate. So the disproportionate share program is very important to us and I would ask for your help. Any questions about that before I move on to another subject?
Jim?
Yeah, Lou, a little bit of my confusion here is this license fee tax is paid to the state of Rhode Island. But am I understanding this correctly, that the state then takes federal money? So they get to keep all the 4.5%, whatever the number is, but they're using federal money and keeping whatever percentage it is to reimburse you for uncompensated care?
Yeah. And I want to be careful because I'm not an expert on this, but the, basically, by the fact that the state reimburses us for the uncompensated care, they're able to get a federal match, which is basically one for one, okay? So historically, 80% of that federal match came back to the hospitals. And over the, and over the years, the state has retained more and more of that. We got to the point in fiscal '12 where I believe the state was retaining at least 90% of it and the hospitals were getting 10%. We, I, but I think, Jim, important to recognize that in fiscal '13, the state really is trying to move back towards a more equitable split of those dollars. And, you know, and the state has its challenges too, from a budget standpoint. So as a group of hospitals, we're appreciative of that and understand, we're just looking for an equitable split. And I could provide more detail on that, Jim, if you'd like, offline.
It's just confusing that they're able to use the federal money while they keep.
Yeah.
I don't even know how you got into this situation in the first place, and I don't want to go back in history, but is there any way, and I'll just on that same question, any way for your size, you can compare your uncompensated care with Rhode Island?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm sure they're twice the percentage. So if you look at it as a percentage of total revenue, I'm sure Rhode Island Hospital is twice our percentage. So they have a, they have a high uncompensated care burden. Now, they get, they're, like everything, you know, there are different wrinkles. The hospitals that have a high Medicaid population also get Medicare disproportionate share payments. So in order to figure out how they're faring, you have to add up all the different pots of money that come in for that uncompensated care. And, you know, sometimes you could make the argument that they're not doing too badly under those circumstances.
Carol?
Lou, could you tell us what the percentages of your uncompensated?
I believe it's 3%.
3%? Thank you.
Maybe 3.5, somewhere in that neighborhood.
That's of all the patients that you service?
That is, of all the revenue, of all the charges, about 3.5% are for uncompensated care patients. You know, I couldn't convert it to a count because some are outpatients and they might make three visits, you know, some are inpatients, so it's hard to convert it to individuals.
But if I may, on that again, the net patient revenues, that is just plain income statement? All revenues coming into the hospital, you, whatever, if you knock out of it, you come out with a net number? Or is there?
Yeah. Where, our income to the hospital last year was about $110 million. We have other, we have two other affiliated entities, VNS and, or actually, three, South County Surgical and South County Quality Care, which is private duty nursing. So you'd have to add approximately 10 million to that.
Okay, but if you're using that 4.5% number, that looks like the number that...
It's a big number, yeah.
So that's really not a net number, it sounds more like a gross number, but I'm, you know, I just don't know how you calculate these things.
Yeah, I can go over the numbers specifically with you if you're interested.
4.5%, $110 million, roughly the four point.
Yeah, 4.5 million and then we get 2 million back, you know, that's all we were getting. Okay? So the, that's a very important issue for us. Another issue that we're very interested in, and Eve can speak to this if you have questions, is comprehensive health planning. We believe that the state would really be enhanced if we had a more structured, actually, if we had a process for planning the resources necessary to provide excellent care to all of the residents of the state. And you may be familiar with the certificate of need process, which, so if we want to, if we want to put on a, you know, build a new bed tower or build another operating room that exceeds the threshold, which I think is about $2 million now, we have to get what's called a certificate of need. We have to demonstrate that there's a need and we have to demonstrate that it is affordable. That is, that we, once we build it, we can continue to support it and we won't put the hospital's financial situation in jeopardy. The problem with the certificate of need process, or one, is that there's no health plan against which to evaluate these capital expenditures. So no one's taken the sort of big picture and said, oh, yeah, we really need more beds in the state. And so the people who have to act on these capital expenditures are doing it in the dark, basically. And more importantly perhaps, healthcare is not like other businesses. You know, it's a need, it's a, and we have to see anyone who shows up at our door. It lends itself to thoughtful planning, you know, not some sort of top-down process where, you know, Senator Sosnowski decides, you know, where they're going to be beds, you know, but really built on some principles and built on an assessment of need, just as you're trying to this evening, assess what needs there are in the county. We think there should be a plan that first looks at the needs and looks at what kinds of services make a difference. How can we use scarce resources more effectively to get better health outcomes? And I think as information technology improves and as we better understand the interventions in healthcare that can make a difference, there's a real opportunity to do effective planning and to really make a difference in health outcomes. I don't know if any of you saw it, this is kind of a, I think, a shameful thing, but the New York Times, I believe it was last Thursday, had an article in which it reported on a study that the Institute of Medicine, a very credible organization did, that compared our life expectancy in this country to 17 developed countries, you know, Japan and France and all the usual suspects. And what it found was that the biggest single contributor that made us 17th out of those countries in life expectancies was death for people under 50. And part of it was healthcare, but a large part of it were other kinds of deaths, homicides, drug overdoses, automobile accidents, things that we really need to pay attention to. So one of the things that, under Eve's leadership, we have done is really tried to extend the hospital's tentacles out into the community and understand some of these factors, largely through our primary care physicians. But I think it's an example of the kind of health planning that could be done that doesn't necessarily involve healthcare. And I never, I really haven't a chance to talk to the council about this before, and I apologize if I'm running on, so you can just, you know, rein me in if, because I know you don't want to be here all night. But if you ever get a chance, go to the Cheshire Medical Center's website and then it'll take you to their community health effort. Keene, New Hampshire, and the county they're in has decided they want to be the healthiest community in the country. And I know you've had some efforts here, which I think the council has supported, to, you know, enhance opportunities for healthy behaviors. But in any case, we really would hope that the legislature would consider funding comprehensive health planning in the next year. I think they appropriated $150,000 in the current year, or in fiscal, in the last budget that ends in June. And really, that's not enough to do effective planning. You're also going to be looking at healthcare conversion, amendments to the Healthcare Conversion Act. And so when, when a hospital gets taken over by another, usually a larger hospital, or if they merge, or whatever kind of relationship they form, the state has a process for approving those conversions of ownership, if you will. And the current act was formed, was established when, the last time a for-profit entity attempted to buy a hospital in the state, I believe it was Roger Williams. Columbia HCA, right.
Seven, I believe.
And, and so it had a fairly narrow purpose. It was to keep for-profits out of the state. I mean, you know, I'm sure that's not what the act says, but that was basically, if you read between the lines, that's what it was designed to do. Last year, it was amended slightly to make it easier for for-profits to come into the state. I think you're going to see some amendments coming out of the Health Planning Council, of which Eve is a member, that are designed to make it more, to speed up the process for two in-state entities to come together. And I haven't seen the details yet. I know they're still working on it. But I think it's very important that we pay attention to that and we pay attention to the criteria. One of the complications is that because we have no health plan, there's no reference in the Healthcare Conversion Act to how we should organize health services. So basically, what's happened so far is that, you know, assuming that they, you know, haven't committed some heinous crime, the hospital gets awarded to the highest bidder. And, you know, I'm happy for Westerly and I think the Westerly community is pleased with the Lawrence and Memorial arrangement. But honestly, I thought that if the resources were available, we could have put together a really good system between the two hospitals for Washington County. And unfortunately, again, because there's no backdrop of a health plan, we couldn't do that. So I would ask that you look at those together because I think they're going to be very important. And finally, we have been advocates for transparency in payment rates. Again, some of you are more familiar with this than others, but when we contract with the Blue Cross or United, we are contractually obligated not to disclose what they pay us for any given service. And we think that's led to very wide disparities in payment for the same procedure from one hospital to the next. And of course, Westerly and South County tend to be at the bottom of the food chain when it comes to payment. And so, you know, just to make this more concrete, so if you have a hernia repair at Rhode Island Hospital, they may pay half again as much to Rhode Island Hospital as they would have paid to Westerly or South County. We don't think that makes a lot of sense. There, clearly, there are, there's a rationale for differential payments. We're not saying that it should be exactly the same across the board, but there ought to be a rationale. It shouldn't be based on the bargaining power of one hospital over another. And the Office of the Health Insurance Commissioner has just conducted a fairly thorough study which confirmed these differentials. They also, by the way, looked at the cost of the services. And once again, I think Westerly may have been the lowest and we were close to them in terms of cost. So we're, we are, as we've always claimed, relatively low paid and low cost. And frankly, we're proud that we're providing the service efficiently. We'd like to be paid a little bit better so that we can do more for the community. So I'm not sure yet whether the Health Insurance Commissioner is going to propose...
Please.
We've been dealing with that issue, I have personally been dealing with that issue for the past 10 years.
Yes.
You know, Chris Cola's report at a cost of about $225,000 basically stated that hospitals are not reimbursed equally, there's a disparity, and quality of care doesn't reflect with the amount of reimbursement or the cost of service. So this year, we've already put the legislation in the Senate, I sponsored it, Sue co-sponsored it, it's been put in, we are going to push it this year. We're not looking to take away money from other hospitals. Clearly, the larger metropolitan hospitals have a very different demographic, geographic, and they're dealing with, at times, higher uncompensated care and they're teaching hospitals. However, it's very, it really concerns me, and I know I speak for some of us in the Senate, when you see hospitals, the disparity is just so great for, as an example of an appendectomy, as an example, no post-operative problems, you get reimbursed $20, the hospital up the road 50 miles is getting reimbursed $100 for the same procedure. That's just not fair. So the legislation we're looking at, and you know, Lou, what it's, I believe you've seen in the past, and I've had some discussions with Harry as well, all we want to do is make that, the numbers public, open, what hospitals get reimbursed... make that, the numbers public, open, what hospitals get reimbursed for certain procedures from the insurance companies. So we can all get a better look at this and see where we can do, you know, where the insurance companies can do a better job with the reimbursements. And that's going to be a big issue this whole upcoming years, is your reimbursements. You're not going to see the same reimbursements, commercial or through the federal programs.
Right.
It's going to be an issue. Your costs are going up and you're going to get less reimbursement.
Exactly.
And the numbers just don't work.
Well, it would be wonderful if you were successful.
Well, we're going to push that.
Good.
It's not going to be to save you, it's not going to solve all the problems, but at least we'll get a better idea what's going on with the hospitals in the state and the disparity that's taking place from one hospital to another, just a few miles up the road.
Right. And I think it will help the consumer, particularly now as we have higher and higher copays or we have deductibles. You'd like to know what it costs for MRI at one place versus another. Eve, did you want to say anything, add anything? Okay. So, that's all I really had. Any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Thank you very much.
There's one other thing I'd like to say. You know, we recognize not only the service you provide for healthcare at the hospital, VNS, and other ancillary services, but also we understand clearly the economic engine South County Hospital provides, not only to the hospital, to the men and women who work at the hospital, but to all of the businesses that, you know, you deal with, whether they be in the medical field, whether they be in the surgical supply field, or whether they be the guy down the road selling a hamburger. We really understand the economics of hospitals and it's a tough, tough business these days. And we're going to continue in our efforts with disproportionate share, the dish payments. You know, we were successful last year to get the additional money in, that's all it was, we're just giving a couple more dollars to West and South County because you folks are struggling. And we're going to do everything we can in the upcoming legislative session to work with you and other community hospitals, but let me tell you, it's not only community hospitals, other hospitals are beginning to feel the pinch as well, and they're going to feel it, especially with the reduced reimbursements and the costs is going up. So, and I have to admit, when we have these issues before the General Assembly, Lou is up there, he's up at the table. He makes himself known up there, he's a pest, to be honest with you, but that's what you want to be. You have to be up there and Lou is meeting with leadership, he's meeting with the chairs, and he's up there looking out for the interests, not only for his hospital, but for healthcare in Rhode Island, and we do appreciate that, Lou.
Thank you.
So is there any action plan that we should be doing as the town council to help better support? Is there resolutions that are needed to be written?
I think it's always, if I may, Madam Chair, Madam President, it's always, it always helps when you have a resolution from a city or town council recognizing the importance of something, a piece of legislation, but I think generally speaking, I think it's important, perhaps, if you did recognize South County Hospital and other community hospitals, just healthcare in general, the need to do something, and, you know, the concern raised with independent community hospitals, I think is a valid one that Lou raises. You know, we'd be more than happy to help you with formulating a resolution at some point, without taking it a lot of time today, working either through you, your clerk, or your town manager, coming up with some language for a resolution that, at the end of the day, helps us a bit as the ones who represent not only you, but the hospital in the state. So we can probably come up with some language.
That would be great, we're going to take you up on that. Thank you so much, Lou and Eve, and I believe Chris Riley's here also, representing South County Hospital. So much appreciated. We're going to move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the University of Rhode Island. So if somebody would like to start that dialogue? Thank you. Steve, I didn't know if you wanted me to address it, or did you want to?
No, I think the main concern that the university has shared with us is the concern as far as the level of state funding, and it's not something that's foreign to anybody that's on council or at the legislative level. I think this year poses a much greater problem for the university in that the directives on the prior board, that's now out of business as of January 1st or extended, was that there be no tuition increases in the proposal that the university would be considering. And I think that for them to stay still with existing service levels with something like a $12 million increase would be necessary in the level of funding that they would need to get through the state funding. And there was concerns on, how do we ensure that the university doesn't have to cut back on the programs, or if there is going to be an availability for tuition increases, when will the new board be in place as a means of being able to address those concerns? And obviously, there's a lot of things going on on campus. I think that certainly Dr. Dooley keeps in contact with the legislators directly. I think the position that the council had taken was that they wanted this on the agenda just to make sure everybody was aware of South Kingston's concern as the host community, that the university has to get the proper supports. And all of this ties out into the other issues that are important to the community. How do we provide for better economic development, is to provide better educational programs to be able to have a better workforce to stay in the state. I'm not telling anybody anything new, but I think the issue was important to the council to have on the agenda to ensure that the legislators were aware of what our concern is on a local basis for continued support of the university, and certainly nothing foreign to you folks.
Jim?
Yeah, just to follow up with Steve's comments too, also, there was quite a bit of confusion in the community, not just with the council here, on, I think the General Assembly decided to have the board become one rather than higher ed in secondary education versus the governor, so we don't quite know that reasoning, we were never really given background of that. But my concern, and you can address both these, is, as you know, the tuition increases for in-state students, you know, have been in the 9%, 10% area. They've dropped the out-of-state, you know, somewhere between 1% and 3% because we are now, from five years ago, 50/50 split, out-of-state students, freshman class coming in matching in-state, we're now 2/3rd in-state, 1/3rd out-of-state. And what's even worse is the final graduating rate, which the out-of-states, a number of them leave, and we get the in-state RIC and CCRi transfers, so this is just a downhill revenue stream with no help from the General Assembly. So those two questions on the makeup of the board and what can we do here to find revenues for this school?
I can say, the makeup of the board, I'm just as confused as you are.
Okay.
To be very frank with you, and I'm not the only one, what we have done is, we're looking, kicking it over for a couple of months, the implementation of the board was to go into effect, I believe, January 1st. We did pass legislation in the Senate, I believe it's something in the House as well, where that implementation is going to be delayed for approximately three months, where we can have some hearings to find out what this new board is going to look like, what it's going to do, and just the dynamics of the board. And I'm confident that eventually we'll pass both Houses just to get some breathing room. In the meantime, the governor has made appointments. We did make the legislation retroactive to January 1st, so if this does pass, it'll give us some breathing room where we'll be able to hold some hearings as to how this is all going to work. So Jim, we're not, I can't tell you how it's going to work because I think we're a little lost for words as well, but that's why we kicked it over for three months.
And if I may, Madam President?
Please.
It was a budget article that the House passed, so we vote article by article and the Senate just votes on the budget as a whole. It came at the last minute, there's no two ways about it. It wasn't the first time that we had heard of it, though. There were full hearings the prior year where the issue had been vetted in House Finance. And I think that the impetus for it, for the proposal, was an act of desperation. There's no two ways about it. We have 75% of the students that are entering community college who need remedial classes. The transition from 12th grade into higher ed leaves us with a tremendous gap. So, students who are entering community college need one and a half years worth of remedial courses to get them up to speed. So, it was an act of desperation. And it is done not, I would love the three months in order to fully implement this. I, you know, it proposes huge hurdles. I don't think it's necessarily the best way to have dealt with it, but it was almost that bucket of water to the face to say, something has to be done because we're facing a real problem. 60% of our workforce requires some sort of certification or certificate or degree beyond high school. We need to find a continuity for our students from K through Gray, as it's calling, as it's commonly referred to now. So, I can say that that was the impetus behind it, and I think we have as good a shot at having this work as where we were going with the two separate boards. So, you know, the Senate has passed it. I know that there's not much of an appetite in the House to pass even the delay. If I can read the tea leaves, I think the Senate may drag its feet perhaps, or maybe I'll recommend the Senate drags its feet, on putting these, confirming the individuals who've been nominated for this new board so that we can have that time to plan more effectively. Again, it's not a great solution, but it is a great problem and we need to try something.
If I may, just to weigh in on this issue. This really is not a new issue, this has been talked about for many, many years. Past presidents of our colleges and universities have brought this up, that there is a duplication of effort as far as our financial boards, the Board of Higher Ed, and every one of the universities and colleges have their own financial boards as well. And it has been talked about that there is a great duplication of effort. So it isn't a new issue, and I would say that we are doing our due diligence on it and trying to slow it down and look at it more carefully, but there has been a willingness for this issue to come about in years past.
So, in the meantime, and Teresa, any one of you, what happens? We're still dealing with the two boards? I mean, you're saying you're trying to implement the single?
Two boards, the two boards basically expired January 1st. There's a new board.
Right, right. So where are we right now? We have no board.
The governor has just put the appointments of the new board in last week, and now hearings have to be held in the Senate for advising consent.
Confirmation.
Confirmation. But right this minute?
Correct.
There is no board.
You are right, there is no board.
And what effect does that have?
Well, that's what I'm asking. And again, that is why the Senate passed, we put forward the legislation so we could slow this down, so there would be a continuation of effort that was in the past, but right now, that's a limbo.
Mm-hmm.
And now the governor has come forward with the appointments. We didn't have the appointments, we just got them. So even though the legislation passed at the end of the session with the budget, the governor had not made the appointments until just, what was it, last week?
Right.
Just last week.
Last Thursday and Wednesday and Thursday.
So even if, you know, if we had had the appointments, there's a possibility we could have, the Senate could have met during the off-session, but we didn't have the appointments to the board. So, we're trying to move on it as quickly as we can.
Teresa? There is one other small point that I'd like to make. In the past iteration with the two different boards, there was a student voice on each of those, and those voices are no longer on the merged board. And it didn't dawn on me until after we had passed it, and I've been working on legislation with Representative Agello to make sure that those student voices are put back on the board. And in past separate boards, the college student had a vote, and the high school student had a recorded vote, but it wasn't toward, it wasn't a deciding vote, it was just a recorded vote. And as a, kind of a concession, you know, we're working with student groups, obviously, we're talking about in this legislation just having those two student voices as recorded votes only, but when we're talking about merging these two, the, as everybody knows, the needs of the two groups can be quite severely different, so I think it is imperative that we have student voice at the table at all times.
Jim?
Just to wear the devil's hat for a minute, everyone knows the last few decades, higher education, university, RIC and CCRi have been incredibly underfunded and actually had, have had tens of millions of dollars taken away over the years, yet secondary education, the last numbers I saw have averaged about 4%, 4.5% growth per year for the last couple of decades. So, if somebody's smart here, maybe by blending the boards, maybe higher ed will get a higher piece this time around, or are they admitting we've really dropped the ball with the colleges and we need to start all over again? I mean, maybe it's that simple, I just don't know, but all I know is, parents are struggling, even the University of Rhode Island. I mean, this is now becoming 9%, 10% increases annually, this is unreal. So, you know, I hope you think about, because we have most of the population for Rhode Island from South Kingston at the university, and it's a struggle for parents, truly is.
And again, just as the hospital is an economic engine, you know, we look at URI also, so any impact that the university has, you know, impacts us here as a town as a whole. And looking at economic development, if they can't move forward with some of their research technology parks, you know, we're looking to plan with them as they have incubator, businesses start with their research technology park that, they will stay in town and improve the economic development that we have here. So it is a win-win if we can find additional support for University of Rhode Island.
I think we can all agree on that, all of us, that we'd like to see URI, you know, flourish and have plenty of money in students and all of that, and we recognize it's difficult in these economic times, but obviously URI is important to the entire state and has been for a very long time, and we'd like to see it do the best it can and...
And URI is also nationally recognized, not only in pharmacy and pharmacology, the School of Engineering, their Graduate School of Oceanography, so it's a great school, great reputation, and it's a wonderful asset not only to your community, but to the entire state, and we do agree that it's an incubator for economic development, there's no question about that. Not only the research and the learning that goes on in the institution, but it provides a great education for, you know, men and women coming out, and hopefully they can be hired in the state of Rhode Island, stay here. So, we do recognize that, and, you know, we'll have the budget in a few days, hopefully, not in a few days, maybe a few weeks, and we'll get a good idea what it looks like in higher education.
And certainly, Dr. Dooley has plenty of ideas to try and raise revenue through different research programs, and I know we're also considering down here, the whole research park on the flag, the north side of URI, near the Flag Street area. So, I think there's a lot in the future for URI, we just might, it might just need a boost to get there, and that's what I'm looking for.
And I agree with that, Carol, and Dr. Dooley has got a lot of great innovative ideas, he's trying to do things through attrition with the professors at URI, and we have supported that. At the legislature, we support his efforts, it's just, unfortunately, sometimes things aren't as easy as we would like them to be, but I think he's a dynamic president and we have been supporting him. He's at the legislature very often, probably as often as Mr. Genkola is when it comes to issues, so he's working very hard and we're supporting him as much as we can.
Ella, just one final comment. University needs to maintain its flagship, you know, reputation. I mean, RIC and CCRi, wonderful, we've got to improve them, of course we need kids with better educations coming out of the secondary school, but we need a university to stand apart. They've got programs now, as you mentioned, senators, and, but we really need to recognize that they're really a top-notch school, and I hate that kind of blending sometimes, that RIC, CCRi, it's all in the same breath. I don't want it to be in the same breath. You have four graduates of the school here, sit on this council, I mean, that's nuts. We really should have that spread, I think we deserve that.
They clearly are three different institutions for three different types of students, and I think there's no question about that, and that has to always be recognized.
But I think looking at combining the nursing, I'm glad to see that the first two years here at URI will keep some of the students here and then move them up with some of the bonds with the simulated operating rooms in the northern part of the state. One concern that was brought to my attention is through the Education Department and the park assessment being pushed forward, and we have problems with, or concerns being brought forward with training the staff at URI. brought forward with training the staff at URI in reference to the Common Core standards, which are producing our teachers for today. And if that whole train could kind of go a little bit slower, so that teachers can get on board to prepare the secondary institutions for the Common Core standards in that park assessment. So I think that that's a piece of the gap that's missing. Teresa, when you speak about not getting that gap closed for some of the kids, it's not, it hasn't come through a full cycle yet. Schools are implementing the Common Core, but we're not training our teachers at the institutions for that product.
Any other comments here?
And thank you for the dialogue. We're looking for suggestions on how to move forward. And again, it's probably going to be a resolution, you know, so that we can forward to the 39 cities and towns. We also would like to work with the Washington County Regional Planning Council, which represents the nine cities and towns here in South County. And I believe that there's a legislative breakfast on February 14th inviting all of the legislators from the nine cities and towns. So they'll be hopping on some of the same issues as well. Third item on the agenda is economic development.
I'd just like to ask, what happened to the appointment, the new appointments? I mean, obviously, they haven't been made. We full-heartedly supported Roland Fiore with a resolution. He's a local businessman. And when is this going to happen? Or isn't it going to happen? And I know that's very difficult.
I may, I don't, appointments to what?
To the Economic Development Commission.
If I may, I can chime in on that. I, soon as I heard of the appointment, received your communications, I relayed that to the Senate President. I guess there was not enough time of discussion between the governor's office and, and the Senate. And we ran out of time at the end of session. I'm not sure where they are right now, if, if those names are still valid, if they're going forward. I can get back to you on that.
That would be great, Sue, because then if, you know, if he is going to be reappointed or if you need another resolution.
Okay.
If, you know...
Because there were some other appointments that the governor had made late, when we were getting ready to adjourn, and we didn't have a chance to act upon them. And now we're getting them scheduled. We're going to do some advice and consent. So I'd be glad to find out about that.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
You know, we're pretty proud of South County, what our strong businesses are. So when we received the governor's budget last January, first thing we'd love to have is really welcoming signs to Rhode Island. He wanted a toll booth. He wanted to double the Pell Bridge. Thirteen percent tax on our cottage homes rental tax. Twenty-five percent increase on meals for hotels, restaurants. This is our livelihood down here.
And that passed.
I know. But this is our livelihood down here. I mean, if he even breathes an increase in there, you have to jump on him. I mean, this is our success. We build on this success.
We did. We looked at, we looked at all those particular taxes and how would it affect not only the coastal communities, some of them did, but the economic development throughout the state. So there is a deliberate process that goes on with the budget. It's lengthy. And, you know, you make your voices known, first of all. You see something in the budget you don't like, pick up the phone, give us a call. You know, hey, I don't like this. This is going to hurt us. This, you know, what are the unintended consequences? Let us know. But, you know, Jim, in that particular, you know, the proposals you, you know, you mentioned, they were all removed from the budget. Because sometimes people do become very vocal, and we hear you. You know, at the end of the day, some of those taxes actually, they hurt us. You're making money, but you're actually losing money because people aren't coming in and spending money. So we did recognize that. If you see something in the budget, just generally speaking, that you're concerned about individually or collectively as a council, let us know. Pick up the phone and let us know. Yell at us. Let us know.
I think they did. You weren't, you weren't representing South Kingstown then.
I wasn't really.
Now you are. But we heard from the loud and clear. And I also, after the budget passed, as Representative Tanzi said, that the House gets to vote on the budget article by article, the Senate, we get one bite at the apple. And a couple of things did pass. And I've put legislation in to repeal the seven percent sales tax on non-veterinary pet care as well as taxi cab fares. So...
And we appreciate that. That's very important.
Hopefully, that will pass.
And the tolls, you know, there's a proposal for the tolls at the Conic River Bridge. And they were proposals for the tolls on Route 95. And, you know, I was a little vocal with the tolls on 95. Listen, the director of DOT was looking for ways to enhance revenue to fix our roads and highways. He's doing his job. I'm not going to take any shots at the DOT director. I'm not. At the end of the day, however, we as legislators, legislators had concerns about how that's going to affect not only the day-to-day travelers going back and forth commuting to work, but also people coming into the state that want to spend money and getting, maybe getting off the road and clogging up some secondary and tertiary roads. So the federal government denied it. We made our voices clear. Some of us supported, some of us didn't. I didn't support it. And it's been taken off the table. However, it's going to probably go back on this someday. So again, collectively, individually, let us know your feelings about a toll on 95. I have concerns about it. But again, the director's just doing his job and trying to raise money to fix the roads and bridges that are decaying. So I'm not going to take any shots at him. I will not do that. But I'm a legislator, and I want to hear my constituents. And they, they had some serious concerns about that.
Yep. And I certainly understand. I'm really happy that Route 195, that entire thing. But that, you know how much money that took.
That, that cost us money, and it cost a lot of projects in the state.
That's what I mean. So it's got to be balanced.
We borrowed money, borrowed money, but we also mortgaged money. We mortgaged future highway funds to build that. And that takes away from projects that you might have on your tip in this community. So whenever you see a project like that, that, in essence, hurt us for a few years. We mortgaged with the GAVI money. We mortgaged some of the money coming in from the federal government. But it worked out very well. And it cost a lot of money.
And really, and hopefully, and hopefully the 40 acres up there that they have for that redevelopment, hopefully that all works out over the next decade or two. No problem there. Another EDC thing, if I could for a minute. I think there are nine to 10 towns that have geographical area for a sales tax exemption for artists.
Yes. Pawtucket, Providence, Westerly.
And, and a few legislators have just been putting in some new or amendments too. Is it too late? I, you know, I know revenues are short supply here, but what can we do? Because I put resolutions in years ago.
There were a few communities that put in for the tax-free districts. They didn't go anywhere. However, if you want to designate a particular area of your community as a tax-free to add on to legislation, get a resolution to us. We'll put it in, and we'll fight for it.
And if I, if I may, I believe the Senate President has said that she's carefully looking at that type of exemption statewide. So that is something that's being looked at carefully.
I just want to ask about, there was something in the paper today about legislation regarding corporate tax rates. Is anybody familiar with that? Reducing them, I believe, making them more competitive with other states.
Right. Pieces of legislation, we'll look at them carefully. They've been reappointed to the Finance Committee, so we'll be looking at those. And any, you know, as the legislation comes forward, as you look at it, if the council as a whole would like to weigh in on it, or even as individuals to weigh in on it, whether you think it's good or not, or amendments or so forth. There'll be plenty of time to work on those.
And without throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we appreciated the success of Moonrise Kingdom down here, those film tax credits. And frankly, Rhode Island has an awful lot of wonderful old buildings, the historic tax credit. You know, I know there's an outflow of money, but what great jobs, mostly union jobs, just, it's been a great economic engine for this state. I just don't know how you can weigh the tax credits against, but there's so many more buildings that need work on.
We are looking at all tax credits, because with tax credits, it costs the state money. But you have to, you know, you quantify them. You have to look at the, your results, the end results at the end of the day. And you're absolutely correct. Historic tax credits do a couple of things. You're rehabbing an historic building. So in some cases, you're actually cleaning up a blighted area. You could be providing housing without building new houses. You might be able to incorporate some affordable housing in those units. There's a number of things. And just for the sheer aesthetics, you're fixing up historic buildings like this building right here. You're doing it. So there's, there's a plus to historic tax credits. And we saw that in the city, in Providence. We see it in some of our communities. So that's something that was brought back last year. We'll continue to look at that. But those type of programs, you really have to look at them and evaluate them. What are we getting for, every dollar we spend, what are we looking at? And that particular case, money was coming back in. Hard and soft money was coming back in. And I do agree with you on that one there, Jim.
And I also want to weigh in that I think that the structure of the original legislation may have been broad.
Yeah, went good.
And now we have tightened that up, and we'll continue to do that. Because to use your phrase, Jim, to throw the baby out with the bathwater, I mean, that's not necessarily a good thing. And that's why we brought it back with tightening it up, if you will. Because we know it's, it can, it can work very well throughout the state.
Yeah, just, oh, go ahead.
There are 235 examples of credits, exemptions, deductions. They're called tax preferences or tax expenditures. And they total $1.7 billion in our state, which equals a third of our entire state budget. And these have no systematic oversight. And I, it's an issue that I've been working on for the past four years. And we just reinvigorated the Oversight Committee on the House side. And I was named a co-Vice Chair of the committee. And it was because of this particular issue. So we are going to be reviewing all of these credits and exemptions over the next five to seven years. Because there are 235 of them, we have to divide it. And we are, I put in a budget request with the governor's office for two to three more FTEs in the Office of Revenue Analysis to be able to provide this type of data. Last year, we allocated as part of the budget $25 million to the Office of Revenue, or to the Division of Taxation, I should say. It's $5 million over the next five years, so that they can integrate their, their data, so that we can evaluate it. I am, you know, I think as a state, we are more than happy to continue with something that's working. The problem is, we have no idea what these programs are returning on our investment. In most cases, we don't even know what these are costing us. And this has been a kind of a national movement to look at these and really gather the data and evaluate them on their effectiveness. And I'm just, I'm very happy that we are going to start demanding that there be proof to the outflow of revenue, that these programs are actually working. So historic tax credit, as the senators had said, in its original iteration, I don't think that it was worth it. We're going to have some, you know, real analysis of it before, you know, as we look at it again this year. And I think it has a much better chance this year. And, and what we get back from that, I think is going to, you know, really make a big difference. Are we off of the agenda? Because I notice we're jumping around a little bit. I did have one...
I just want to say we have until 7:30, because we do have a town council meeting. And I know that Senator Algeos needs to go. So I didn't know if there was any parting comments with coastal erosion, affordable housing.
Very, very, I have to leave, but very briefly, the coastal erosion, and Sue can fill in on this, and I'm sure the representative can also, but I believe there'll be a workshop soon to discuss some of the experimental, I know Sue's been working on this, you can mention it, but there'll be a workshop on the experimental regulations that they've been using down here.
The special area management.
If you want to see some erosion, come down to Maswamiket. I'll show you some erosion.
I took a trip down there. Absolutely incredible. No one understands.
It's pretty tough down there.
Phenomenal. Phenomenal.
Thank you for your time. And we do have another meeting on February 18th, so hope to see you.
A lot of meetings in South Kingstown.
Thank you. So Teresa, talking, I think we're, we're sticking to the agenda. I just wanted, you know, coastal erosion, that's next, or did you want to...
Oh, just the tolls, because it had come up earlier, so...
Right. But we'll come back to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we'll move on to the coastal erosion?
Okay.
I know that there, Sue, you had written a resolution, and I think there was a response. I'm going to let Steve address it, maybe about four or five weeks ago, six-page answer on the experimental measures. So I'll start with Steve and then Sue.
I think the Senator just addressed the experimental coastal erosion control document, which Coastal has out for comment at this point. One thing I would comment on, as far as we had requested that the Town Beach area, the Town's Holding be included within that experimental zone. For whatever reason, they started to the, to the east of that and excluded the Town Beach. Now, obviously, after the last storm, where we lost another portion of the beach pavilion and boardwalk, we certainly think that experimental regulations should be there, available for the community, particularly since we may be able to provide demonstration as to things, both of a soft and hard nature, that can occur. Why that was not placed into the regulations, we're unsure. We had met with that, with Coastal staff in advance of the publication of the draft, and advised them of our concerns with that. Apparently, it did not, it did not get any reaction from them. The other thing is that we suggested that the document that they've prepared at this point really needs a technical appendices that would provide specific descriptions to those property owners as to what they mean by soft and hard measures. The way the draft is written, it also provides real disincentive to the property owners who may have infractions against their properties already that have been, been filed. Because essentially, what they're suggesting is that all of the non-conforming provisions or measures that have been taken need to be removed as a component of using the experimental regulations. It may well be a necessity that some of the existing structures that have been placed there should be grandfathered at this point, or have some type of a phase-out period associated with them, rather than being denied in totality. We are concerned, because we don't know if the experimental regulations really provide the property owners with the tools necessary to evaluate what could work on their property and what couldn't. There are specific measures that they could illustrate, and they could document, could be tried on these beach fronts. But rather, they're suggesting to the neophyte who owns the property, go find it and bring it back to us, and then we'll consider it. And Sue, I wasn't aware, did they ever get back to you on the resolution that you had passed in terms of dealing specifically with metunic erosion?
Basically, Steve, I did get a letter from Grover Fugate in the late summer. And I'd be glad to share that with you. It was basically talks about working on the special area management plan. But I'd be glad to share that with you and the council, so you can see that. But basically, that was their compliance with the resolution, was that they felt that they, they started the special area management plan, and they felt that that was then compliance with the resolution. So as far as your, any type of correspondence that, you know, critiquing the draft plan, I think the delegation would really like to see any copies of that, so we could help the council, if you will, and you, as we go forward with this.
We'll, we will have that drafted for council consideration, and we'll forward it to the legislators.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments on coastal?
I just wanted to say, on the coastal, I think we need to consider for, for those properties that are trying to salvage what they've lost, reconsider almost an amnesty for prior violations, so that they can make the next step, rather than tearing down and rebuilding to comply with CRMC. And I don't know how we'd go about that. It's just a...
It's just a suggestion, so that we can get to the next step. Right. We could reach out if there's a council resolution, or if there was something that you would like us to do on that. I know we had worked together in the past with the ocean mist situation, way back when, before all these storms.
That's a good example.
And at that time, the chair of the council worked with Grover Fugate, and they did do some type of amnesty as far as their violations at that time. So if that's something that the council desires for, for us to pursue, we could send letters to CRMC and work with you on that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is affordable housing. Do you want me to? Steve, would you like to? I know this has been a hot topic with Charlestown, and we've, Vince's been doing some work with trying to get a meeting. And the tentative date is January 24th. That may be, I'm not sure if it's going to be changed, but there's definitely a review needed. So Steve, did you want me to, did you want to present this?
I was going to have Vin Murray address it.
We are in the process of organizing a regional forum for Washington County on affordable housing. And we are changing the date to avoid a conflict with the Interlocal Trust Dinner. And we are changing the date to avoid a conflict with the inter-local trust dinner. The date would be the 31st. We just, we have two speakers tentatively at that. We have Susan Boddington from Rhode Island Housing. And we may have the woman who's, Jean Cola, who's the Executive Director of Lisk, which is a large national nonprofit that deals with, it's a local initiative support corporation. They mostly deal in the central city, but they also have, we're kind of inviting them to come down to Washington County and see what, you know, what they might be able to offer to this vicinity of the state. And there has been a lot of discussion about the need for a review of the 4553, the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act. It was passed, I guess, 2004 and then amendments in 2006. And we have a bit of a changed landscape and certain experiences among the communities with the application of the law and the pursuit of the 10% affordability goal that was embodied therein. So, there also was a, been a suggestion made, one of the tools that a lot of communities adopted relative to try to promote affordable housing was what's called a fee in lieu of affordable housing, where if there was a requirement for a developer to build housing on a site and it was just proved to be not feasible, at the end of a progression, the community could receive a fee to be used for affordable housing. Well, East Greenwich had such a fee and it went to the State Supreme Court, whereupon it was struck down. And the Supreme Court said that really what was necessary was a legislative enabling of that, it's similar to an impact fee. And so that's an open issue that I think, South Kingstown's, we have an ordinance in place that we can't apply, we'll have that option as a tool. And so there, you know, that would seem to be a need for at least a good, long conversation with the legislature in that particular regard. I mean, there's a couple of things that come to mind, but, you know, it's always, it's of great interest, affordable housing in Washington County communities and, you know, it's obviously complicated, but it seems like it's a good time to, there was a legislative committee that I guess was established but hasn't really met to look at the law itself, so. A few thoughts in that regard, so.
Have you had discussions with affordable housing?
There have, there have been some discussions and as you said, Vin, it's when it was first initially passed and then it was amended. Here we are in 2013 and obviously, things have definitely changed. And it is time to look at it, but I know there's lots of discussions about it. And I did receive a packet, I think it was a model or draft ordinance from the town of Charlestown. And I think probably all the delegation has received that, to look at that. But I would say that's, needs to be a lot of discussion on it as far as which direction, because as you know, there's a lot of different ideas out there from every city and town, which way to go. So, we're aware of it. We're looking for input from you folks.
All the legislators and town councilors will be beginning an invitation this week to that forum and hopefully, your schedule may be able to accommodate. Thursday, 31st, January, 7:00 PM, right here, so.
Looking at the time left, I mean, if there's any comments on tolls, we've basically addressed it. If any town councillor has any further comments?
I have just one comment on the tolls. I mean, the reality is, nobody wants them. They're talking about the Sakonit Bridge tolls now and there's a movement to repeal the toll that's on there. And, you know, you can choose which way you want to pay for it. I mean, we still, as we were saying earlier, we have to pave the roads, we have to maintain things. And so you're looking at a penny increase in your gas tax. So, you know, that's what they're offering in lieu of tolling the Sakonit River Bridge. So, by saying you don't want one thing, you have to think about where else you'd rather take the hit. So, these aren't, you know, you can't just say you don't want it, no matter what the tax, whether it's the veterinarian or the, you know, we have to find a way to pay the bills. There's an absolute amount that we need and there's many ways to get it. So, you know, it's not always enough to rail against a tax or a toll. It's having the complete conversation about the actual costs of running a state and, you know, just realize, it's easy to say no to that, but then we're all going to pay the penny per cent, or cent per gallon tax.
And then the other items that we're not going to get into a full-blown discussion on was mass transportation. I know that we talked about the stops possibly at URI, you know, that was brought up by Councillor Paul Donnelly. And then binding arbitration. I think, you know, all the cities and towns have signed in that, you know, no changes in the binding arbitration. So with that said, are there any other comments that we need to discuss before we close?
I'd just like to bring up one. I know this, this could use a whole night and then some of conversation, but I know, Theresa, you have hit on it in the newspaper, gun control. And I noticed in the paper today that our four, our two United States Senators and Congressmen have all signed on board for banning military-type assault weapons and the magazines. And I think that our state should also step forward and join that, join that discussion and that position and get state legislation stating the same. And I'm just wondering, I know the discussion has started up there, but, and I know it's going to take quite some time and there's a lot of issues back and forth, but I'd just like to express my own feelings about it. And I'm certainly on board with the Congressmen and the Senators, White House Reid, Landjevin and Cicilline. And I'd like to see us do the same at the state level.
There will be proposals, extensive package of proposals. The House and the Senate is working along with DEM and the state police and the police chiefs associations and so forth. We're also working with the mental health community. This is a comprehensive look. It's not just about the massacres. It's about public safety. It's about public health. This is a real opportunity to look at this holistically. And, you know, I'm educating myself. I'm certainly not, it's not a place that I was raised in, but it has been a fascinating opportunity for me to look at, you know, the history, the culture. And I have to say, to a person, everyone that I've engaged with in this conversation, it may have started out in a very polarized place, but within 25 seconds, we can usually find middle ground that we can all agree on. And with the most adamant polar opposite, it may take 25 minutes, but there is common ground that I have found with every single person that I've had a conversation with on this issue. So, I thought that that would be an impossibility. And I'm very heartened to say that reasonable changes to regulations, to laws, are within reach and I'm happy.
I just want to say, as a lawyer, I've looked through the definitions of firearms and I think one of the problems we're having is defining what these weapons are. And I think we have to really, there's so many names, machine guns, automatic weapons, semi-automatics, assault weapons. I mean, we need to know a detailed, what is it that we want to outlaw? And if, if that's the way the legislature wants to go, if that's the way United States, the national government wants to go, then we have to decide what it is. So there's no question, because right now, I think it's rather vague and we don't all know what we're talking about. And that's, that needs, we all need an education on this.
It's true.
Because like you, I'm not familiar with these kind of weapons.
And it may come down to a ban on particular models. And that's what I am looking at at this moment, literally, model by model of guns and different calibers of ammunition. And it will be more than likely, looking at what other states have done, models and characteristics. And, you know, we're looking at ways to keep that ban fluid so that as new models are created and enter the market, we can respond, as opposed to just letting these things kind of get way out of, out of our hand. So, you know, it really is a comprehensive discussion, you know, gun owners and advocates at the table. And I can't imagine it any other way. We need to have all sides represented because this is such an important issue.
I do have to say that I don't think our founding fathers, when they wrote the Declaration of Independence, that they anticipated this kind of weaponry in society. And I think that we, it's a living, breathing document. We have to always, it's always changing with society and I think we need to recognize that with this issue. And in light of that, you know, I'm glad to hear that the discussion is taking place and I may do a resolution. I don't know if I have the support of the other five at the table here, but I certainly think it's something we need to address for the safety of the community, not to take away anybody's Second Amendment right. That isn't what I'm proposing here. Just, everything has limits.
And just three more that I just want to, I don't want to get into any discussion, but appreciative of the meeting that we had at South County Hospital with the Medicare guidelines. And we'll be pursuing something in joint with the hospital, some kind of a resolution to move up to the feds with changes in the Medicare guidelines. And then the last two is, you know, speaking on behalf of, I know you met with the school committee, but that group home aid, you know, is absolutely important and important in not moving that educational funding formula, you know, quicker than the train is already moving. So, with that said, any last-minute comments?
I just want to say, I meant the Constitution, not the Declaration of Independence, so if you can just strike that.
Thank you. And we really look forward to working together and appreciate your diligence working up at the General Assembly, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And you can spread out now.[1334.01]
Is everyone ready, Brad?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Stay standing.
You have to pledge first anyway.
Welcome. I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:45. The date is January 14th, and if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have just finished a work session with our legislators. We started at six o'clock, so thank you for your patience and your indulgence. Could we please have the roll call, Colleen?
I'm present.
Present.
I'm present.
Here.
Councilmember Donnelly.
Here.
Councilmember Healy.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Colleen. We can just remember to turn on all of the mics and speak into the mics. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of December 10th and December 14th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session, December 10th and December 20th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last is the closed executive session of December 10th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any town councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a vitrualling and dance license to Tops Incorporated doing business as Rare Steak and Fish, 191 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by James Lapoom, and it's the president, 25 Linden Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island. And if we could have James come to the mic and speak about this endeavor. You have the cameras running, so this is your time to shine. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? My name is James Lapoom, and I'm half of Rare, along with Charles Samaras. We look to open this wonderful restaurant in the prior location where Casey's was. Really, a place to bring people together, not just another place to go get a drink, but a place where you feel comfortable, and people stop two, three, four times a week. The restaurants I've run in the past, it's more of a family atmosphere with the staff and the guests. So people come in and they just feel like they're at home. And then, you know, the service and the food, keeping it classy casual, where you can just come and get a great meal for a great price, and get to know your servers by name. And every restaurant I've ever been involved with, that's really what we carry through. We carry really that family atmosphere. So, that's what we're looking to do right now.
Thank you, and I'm just going to see if there's questions here at the table, James. Carol?
When do you, I know you're going to do some renovations, that's what I understand. Can you tell us about those?
Right now, we're still, hopefully, in the late designing stages, but it could still be the early designing stages. Things change from day to day. We are still working with the contractors. The floor plan changes every day, in terms of where tables are going to go. So, a lot of the booths are going to be removed and tables are going to be put where the booths are. So, there's a little more, a little more area to move, move tables or chairs around, make it a little more comfortable for people to dine also, instead of being in a tight booth.
Is it going to have a totally different look, as opposed to a sports bar?
That's the plan, correct.
So, it isn't going to be a sports bar anymore?
No, no, no.
And when do you plan to open?
We're hoping early April, every day. We want to hold on to that early April, but it could push to mid-April.
Right.
Because the number one thing we want to do is, we want to get it right. We want people to walk in and just feel like, wow, this is beautiful, and this is a place we really want to spend our night.
Nice.
Are you proposing any changes in the hours of operation, or are you going to keep it similar to what it was when it was the other owners?
The only change that would be, would be opening later in the day. We've discussed different options, but we're looking about either like three o'clock or four o'clock in the afternoon.
Other questions? Jim?
Mike, maybe you can help me with this. How broad is the dance license definition? Dancing, billiards, pool, you know, shooting hoops, or is it just simple?
In the Rhode Island general laws-
Well, I meant South Kingston, or is it Rhode Island general laws?
It comes under entertainment, which, which is pretty broad, but it specifically references dancing. So, I assume you're going to have music and areas where people are going to be able to dance.
It's, it's come up in conversation. Nothing has been set in stone with dancing or, or anything along those lines.
So, are these two licenses, then? I guess I'm asking, I've forgotten all my dance rules, liquor, vitrualling, help me out. So, it's two different?
This is in terms of the vitruing license and the dance license.
Okay, yeah.
And you can vote on them separately if you want.
No, that's fine.
And I will ask you, when someone makes a motion, make them subject to the approval of the liquor license, which is coming up as your next public hearing.
All right, the second question was, you mentioned you've been in the business before.
Yes, sir.
Whereabouts?
Excuse me. I moved to Narragansett in 1995, and I started working at Co-Scott House. I worked at Co-Scott House. I worked at Blackpoint when they were there. One of the owners of Co-Scott House, his good friend was opening a restaurant in Florida. I moved to North Palm Beach and opened a restaurant there. I also worked for the Capital Grill, and as of late, for the last 12 years, I've been working for Newport Restaurant Group, operating 22 Bowens, Smokehouse, and for the last three or four years overseeing Trio in Narragansett.
Yeah, that turned into a big operation, didn't it, just by a major franchise in Massachusetts?
Yes, paparazzi.
Paparazzi, correct. Wow. Okay, thank you.
So, what we're going to do, James, is, if there's no more questions here at the table, we're going to go to the public hearing, and then we're going to come back and take this vote.
Okay.
Okay? So, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to an application for a transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended as follows. Transfer of a Class B vitrular license from Casey's Incorporated doing business as Casey's Restaurant, 191 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Joseph Formacola, junior president, to Tops Incorporated doing business as Rare Steak and Fish, 191 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Charles Samaras. Vice President for the dining room, lounge, loft, greenhouse, and as further defined in the site plan, on file in the town clerk's office. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes, user fees, and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and satisfaction of all claims. So, at this point, are there any communications, Colleen?
Yes. You have two communications. Communication dated January 4th, 2013, received from attorney Paul Pizzano on behalf of his clients, Rhode Island Distributing Company, Johnson Brothers of Rhode Island, and Horizon Beverage, objecting to the transfer due to Casey's indebtedness to his clients. And a subsequent communication dated January 12, 2013, has been received from attorney Paul Pizzano on behalf of those same clients, releasing the objections. No other communications have been received.
Thank you. Steve?
I'd recommend the council at this time incorporate the comments and dialogue presented under 6A for the license to the, to the record of the public hearing, so that Mr. Lapoom won't be required to repeat the same information again.
Thank you.
So moved, that.
When we get to the motion.
Second.
Okay, so are there any questions here at the town council table? And I need to go up to the public with any questions, and then I need to close, and then have a motion. So, any questions here at the town council table?
I really was hoping, I thought we'd have a new dance spot along with casual classy dining.
I will work on that for you, sir.
Carol?
I just wanted to ask about your menu. Obviously, it's steak and fish. If you could elaborate at all, any, like, I don't know, what are you going to have there? Just steak and fish, that's pretty general.
Well, the overall theme will be steak and fish. There's been a lot of things out there, because I do come from 22 Bowens, that it's going to be an upscale steakhouse. That is 100% false.
That's what I heard.
It's going to be the community place, so, community places, you really can't go and spend the kind of money that we spend in Newport. But back to the menu, we are obviously going to have steak and fish, but there'll be chicken, there'll be pork. All the, all the dishes will be composed, so it will come with sides on the plate, and the chef's going to get as creative as he can, but keep that home, that home feeling, that home cooking feeling also. So whether it's a ribeye or a nice piece of stletch chicken breast or pork loin, it's, I mean, the list just goes on and on. If, do you have a personal favorite? Because I definitely-
And I hope you'll shop local for your produce and fish.
We always have.
We always encourage that.
I always have, absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely.
Any other comments here at the town council table? Seeing none, I'm going to open, this is a public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to come to the microphone and comment. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed. Now, could I have a motion to include all of the comments with 6A?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. We're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Congratulations.
Now, you need, though, a motion to approve the application-
We're going back to 6A.
That would be license 7A, including the paragraph at the bottom there.
I move approval of license-
6A.
6A, and said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violation, and the satisfaction of all claims.
You actually had that right. It was 7A, and then you go back to 6A.
So, we're on 6A.
You're on 7A right now.
7A.
Sorry, 7A right now.
7A.
It's confusing.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now, we can go to the 6A.
6A.
And then, Jim, just in further answer, I did confirm that the dance license that they've applied for is just for dancing. If they wanted a game room license, they'd have to apply for that separately.
Game room is separate.
That would be the billiards and the pinball and the video machines and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And that's not before you, of course, tonight. It's just dancing.
How about a jukebox? When does that fall?
Yeah, I don't think that's music. I don't think a jukebox would be a problem. Because, yeah, a jukebox is going to be fine. I don't know, do they still have those?
No, 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 no.
They're about this big now.
No, those wonderful new digital things on a wall, you can just, you know, have your cellphone call for your favorite tunes to come up.
I think music and television is allowed in most restaurants, Jim, if not all.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the license for 6A?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. I'm excited.
Thank you.
Which brings us to our second public hearing. Like to open the public hearing relative to the filing of a pre-agreement request to the Rhode Island Office of Housing and Community Development on behalf of the Domestic Violence Resource Center for South County. Said request is for a total of $120,000 in CDBG funding for program year 2013, to insist with the conversion of their safe house facility to permanent supportive housing. Vin?
Hi. Good evening. I have some brief background, and also people associated with the Domestic Violence Center for Resource Center for South County are here to answer the specific questions the council may have regarding this public hearing item. As noted on the agenda, they are requesting that the town file a pre-agreement request with the Office of Housing and Community Development for program year 13, 14 block grant funding in the amount of $120,000. The, in essence, the, the request is, is really made in support of a, a plans by the, by the center to convert their existing emergency shelter to a permanent supportive housing. Four units of permanent supportive housing, one in two bedroom, and they would maintain a fifth unit as an emergency shelter. The memo that was provided by their project consultant, Mr. Gordon, which was provided to the council in your packet, discusses the evolution of the need change which prompted this consideration. The reason for the pre-agreement really is to, because this is a, a project that's ready to proceed at this point, and the timing of other resources that are necessary to put this together in a complete budget form kind of dictates that, kind of chicken and egg things, that the chicken and the egg have to go together to, in terms of decision making. Yeah, they, the Domestic Violence Resource Center is seeking federal home program funds and neighborhood opportunities funds that are administered by Rhode Island Housing, and they're trying to have all these requests in it, and this, the pre-agreement is timed to be consistent with that, so they have the decision timeframes and take us to assemble their budget. And the strategy that they are seeking, multiple sources of fin, of funding concurrently, it's, it's a deliberate approach that's intended to leverage the native funds to reach 100% of project funding. As I mentioned, they're seeking to create four units of permanent affordable housing in the town, which would count towards the town's requirements under the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act. And they are also, had made a request to the housing authority to consider the dedication of four Section 8 vouchers towards the units to be created. And that would be another portion of the project funding and financing, but at this time, the housing authority is not able to commit that, but, you know, that, that may change over time, or the organization may have contingency plans to try to achieve that portion of their project concept. We did consult with the Office of Housing and Community Development to ensure that if we, if the town proceeds with this request, that it would not penalize us in terms of what we could apply for during the normal CDBG funding cycle, which is kind of mid to late spring and, and for that submittal. And we are assured that this is a project that's considered eligible over the cap, and as such, the town would still be able to apply for the maximum amount, which we typically don't get, but we would, we'd still be able to get, to apply for $300,000 in total during the normal project funding cycle, which will be coming before the council fairly soon, but, you know, they're, you know, this request is to, is timed towards the, the other funding sources that are under, being sought. This project has all the necessary approvals from a regulatory perspective on a local basis. The planning board had approved the project. The design is done. I mean, I think, and I mentioned shovel-ready, and it, it truly is. And we also, the planning department did submit a letter in support of the application being made to the home program for Rhode Island Housing, and that was submitted in the middle of December, just last month. And, you know, and obviously, as the council is aware, the Domestic Violence Resource Center, South County, has a long and distinguished track record in providing, in the community, providing critical services and support to an at-risk population. And we note in the memo that the pre-agreement request is viewed as a means for the organization to move their mission forward positively and by providing this permanent supportive housing and helping to address and still yet unmet community needs. So, we did provide, for the council's consideration, should you look upon this favorably, a draft motion for your consideration, and I think I would defer to Ms. Rota or her, her team, if there are specific questions or if they want to make some comments with more specificity on their particulars of the project.
Thank you, Vin. Mary, do you have any comments? Let me just see if Mary has any comments, and then we'll go with questions here at the table.
I really just want to thank you for such a thorough presentation. I think that Vin and his team really represented us well. They've been very supportive in our efforts to go forward. So, I really don't, unless you have questions-
I'm going to bring, any questions here at the table? Jim?
Mary, so, so this piece completes all your funding requirements?
I'm assuming-
This is the final piece to complete your funding requirement?
Assuming that our request to Rhode Island Housing is successful. Yes, it does.
Okay. And what would be the timing of this, Vin? Is there, how soon can approvals and money come down the pipe?
Well, I think in terms of the pre-agreement, there would be a review by, there's a committee that the state uses to review proposals of this sort. I think we're told by middle of March, perhaps, there would be an answer. And I believe that's similar timeframe in terms of the decision on the home application, that's before Rhode Island Housing. So, we are told, one of the things we were told by the Office of Housing and Community Development was- was that if they were, if this went forward to them and they, and they provided a, an approval, it would likely be conditional upon other funding sources being put into place so they wouldn't have money committed that couldn't be utilized absent other pieces falling in. So, but I believe they've submitted a strong application under the home program, and we're hopeful that that's successful because, you know, this is, certainly the planning board thought this was a great project, as did the Affordable Housing Collaborative.
I personally certainly concur. I just didn't know where this fell in terms of the dominoes of funding. But, but your best guess is middle of March?
Yes.
For this, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions here at the table?
I don't have any questions, but I know we discussed this before, and this is a win-win situation for the organization, for domestic violence, and for the town of South Kingstown. So I think it's great.
Thank you, Carol.
Seeing no more questions, I'm going to open the mic. This is the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment, this is the time. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. At this time, can we entertain a motion?
I move that we approve public hearing item 7B concerning the request by the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County for consideration of $120,000 in pre-agreement funding for its safe house conversion project under the Community Development Block Grant Program. The project has received all local regulatory approvals and is ready to proceed. The completed project will provide four units of permanent supportive affordable housing for an at-risk population. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we'd like to thank all of you for all of the work that you do for this town, and Vin, you know, for all the work also that you've done. Thank you. It's an exciting endeavor.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is a communication item. This is a communication dated December 14th, 2012 from William D. Sisari. Exalted ruler, South Kingstown Elks Lodge, number 1899, requesting consideration for exemption of the organization from taxation is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Could I just begin by confirming that no one on the council is an officer of the Elks?
No.
No.
I am a member of the Elks, but I hold no leadership role.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I'll get that on the record.
And this is on here, and I think that one route that we could possibly go, but I'd like to hear from the town council, is that we could ask Mike Gracillo for maybe the next town council meeting to draft an ordinance for us to address this. Because the public law does state that the town does need an ordinance in order to act on this.
Yeah, as you know from my memo, I pointed out that there are two different vehicles which the council could choose if it so desired to grant some type of a tax exemption. I have confirmed through the Internal Revenue Code regulations that a 501(c)(8) is in fact a charitable organization. Therefore, under the statute, which allows you to enter into pilot agreements, it would qualify as a charitable organization. Additionally, as Ella has just mentioned, there's a 1989 public law that was adopted, which would allow the council per ordinance to grant a full tax exemption. So those are the possible different directions you could take.
Steve, if I'm not mistaken, I'd like to ask, according to the last memo which was sent out, currently with the Elks lodges that exist throughout the state, there are currently only two, I believe it's South Kingstown and East Providence, that are currently paying taxes. Is that correct?
Based on the review that the assessor has completed, I believe it's just on those communities that he is aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are we looking forward to a motion to ask Mike to draft an ordinance? And we'll have further discussion?
Yes, I move that we support this and send it to Mike Gracillo and Steve Alfred to give us the options regarding the pilot and/or the tax exemption or both. Do we know which way we want to go?
Mike, if you could give us the advantages of which vehicle, just a rough sketch now?
Yeah, it's with the pilot program, you would actually negotiate the amount of taxes that would be paid, something presumably between zero, is it about $10,000, and $10,000 that the organization's paying the town now. So you would be able to use a formula to decide what that should be. Under the public law, which is different, the council could provide a 100% exemption, and that would require a town ordinance. Right, yeah. The ordinance would be zero taxes, period. The pilot would be a negotiated situation.
Okay. Yep, all right. Got a clarion there. Thank you.
Right. So if you need an ordinance, I certainly can draft the ordinance. If you also want a copy of what a pilot could look like, we could provide you with both. It's really, you could decide that tonight, or you could decide it at, if you just see the documents in front of you.
I believe the Elks is asking for the full tax exemption. So.
I concur. I believe based on the letter that we had received, it was addressed to Ella, that they were asking to have a full designated exempt status.
So that would be the ordinance.
And Mike, you said that was passed in 1989 by the state legislature?
Yeah, it's a public law. It's actually not on.
98 or 89?
I'm sorry?
1989 or 1998?
No, 1989.
89.
89. And it was passed as, you know, there are public laws and general laws. The general laws are very easy to index and find, not so much so for the public laws. So I think Gene is the one who became aware of it.
We found it last year.
Really?
In 2012 was the first time that we became aware of it. Interestingly enough, whoever introduced it in 1989, apparently there was not a need at the General Assembly level to get town council concurrence on legislation for tax exemption. We assume one of our local legislators, at the request of the Elks, may have introduced it. It was adopted. We had, I had no personal knowledge of it until Gene brought it to me last year. So subsequent to that, we've got the letter. So I guess we need to understand what the council wants us to provide. Again, the differences that we're looking at is either 100% would go through an ordinance, and there would be no other involvement with the town. Under a pilot agreement, you would be looking at having a portion of the assessment waived, yet there would still be some type of direct payment made to the town. So a lot of it depends on what the council's preference is. We could give you a projection as to what the revenue requirements would be under a pilot agreement, but if the council's not interested, that will just prepare the ordinance.
Is this, is this the only 501(c)(8) organization that we do have in this town right now? I know we have a lot of 501(c)(3)'s and other designations.
We have a number of organizations that do receive tax exemption from the town, such as Johnny Cake Center, the Health Center. There's many of those strictly human service organizations have come to the council in the past, have received or have state-enabling legislation for the tax exemption. Each one of those is different. That's why they need to be looked at separately by the council. In a situation like this, council may look at the fact that there is commercial operation which occurs there, in addition to the profits from that being used for the proper purposes, on whether or not that should play any role in having a pilot agreement versus total tax exemption. Again, it's up to the council to decide which avenue they want to go down on this.
Can I just, unfortunately, we didn't, we weren't able to discuss this at the work session, but what, I know Meg brought up that most of the Elks lodges are exempt from taxation. Is that, are any of them paying, payment in lieu of taxes? Are any of them doing that? Or are they all exempt except for Providence and South Kingstown? Oh, East Providence, sorry.
I think that right now, there's a, in some communities, what they've got is the luxury of being able to establish a cap on the assessment that would be, would be subject to exemption. Bristol has $100,000 worth of assessment value as a cap. All of the others are exempt, from Wunsaka to Westerly to West Wallack, Wallack, Smithfield, Newport. I think what you're going to see in the upcoming years is as communities become more high-pressed on taxes, the issue is started in East Providence and moving into Wunsaka, is evaluations on whether or not they want to maintain those tax-exempt statuses for those different organizations. But as far as the real estate, those are all exempt in those communities. The only place where they're paying taxes, or I should say, East Providence is currently under review because of their review of all of their tax exempts, and Bristol has a cap of $100,000 on the amount that would be exempted. When you look at the personal properties and costs with our Elks, there's only a $20,000 value there. Some are yes and some are no.
Jim?
Steve or Mike, when Brown and Rizdy, Johnson and Wales, the colleges in Providence looked through this, you know, I know they didn't piece it down between police, EMT services versus educational services, but did they do a pilot program, or do you know if they did a?
Those are all voluntary payments because they're, by law, they are exempt as educational institutions. Roger Williams, by the way, in Bristol, did specifically enter into agreement with Bristol with regard to public safety services. So theirs is a little bit different with Roger Williams in Bristol.
Okay. And this exemption does not include the fire district tax. This is only town of South Kingstown. If it were 100%, it does not include the?
But I think the fire district, if I'm, they use our tax roll, so if they're exempt from our taxes, they'll most likely also be exempt from fire district.
Legally, the taxes for the fire district could be required. They use our tax roll, but they would be able to set their own exemptions, Jim.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you.
So I think getting back to Meg's question with the 501(c)(8), is that only designated for Elks? That was my understanding. Only the Elks are 501(c)(8) s?
Yeah, 501(c)(8) are for fraternal organizations, so I don't know if there are other fraternal organizations in the town that have that designation. I do know this, it appears that only the Elks was granted this public law, this 1989 public law. It was specific legislation just for that.
And my understanding was that it was legislator by the name of Goldberg?
Bobby Goldberg.
Who, and I did swing into the Elks the other day to see if he was still a member of the Elks, and he is. And my other understanding is that John Coppinelli and his brother, Bob, also, tunic volunteer firefighters, also had a part in this, this information that I received.
Carol? If we were to do a payment in lieu of taxes, Steve, or Mike, whoever wants to answer this, do you have any idea how you would go about assessing the tax on that, or what you would use?
I don't at this point. I mean, what I would specifically want to look at would be what portion of the property is being used for a commercial purpose?
Mm-hmm.
We took similar actions when we dealt with South County Hospital, when they built the medical offices building. And the only reason it was looked at then was whether, because it was going to provide tax-exempt space, which was providing some type of a commercial activity, or space in town that would have been ordinarily rented by a doctor was going to be not rented, or the rents were going to be paid to the hospital. But, I mean, really, it comes down to, if there was a payment in lieu of taxes, it would be an arbitrary decision on the council's part if they said, "Look, we want you to pay $2,000 a year rather than 10," or whether you wanted them to pay 5,000. Really, it would be a residual dollar amount that you're talking about versus the 10,000 that is on the assessment roll now. And again, I caution, the assessment roll is based on the current year. Once we do the reval, I would assume that it's going to change market just like anybody else in that class of property. But, you know, it would be an arbitrary decision that the council would have to make as far as whether they thought that some type of residual payment to the town were a necessity, or whether they wanted to provide total exemption. It would really be a council preference.
Well, even in their letter, they referenced the Rhode Island general laws and South Kingstown certain nonprofit charitable organizations slash tax exemptions or payment in lieu of tax agreements. So they're also recognizing the possibility. I guess I would like to know what we would, if we were going to do a payment in lieu in taxes, what we're really talking about, as far as numbers.
Well, if you want, Michael and I can meet with the gentleman who presented the letter to us and explore that discussion and provide you with memorandum on that.
I don't know.
I think it would be prudent. I agree. I think it would be very prudent to designate what is considered charitable versus what is commercial. I think that I would find that information very helpful. I can't speak for the other members of the council, but I do think that's a good start.
See, the difficulty you run into is the commercial operation is used to generate the monies that are then used for the charity. So it's very, very difficult to separate. That's why I say to you, it's one where I think it would come down, does that organization think that there should be some type of residual payment to the town, and if so, how much? And then whether or not they come of the same mind with the council. But I don't think there's any formula that we're going to come up with that's going to be hard and fast. I think as you've seen, if there's, I believe there's nine Elks clubs in the state of Rhode Island, and really, you've got seven of them that are paying, are exempt from taxes on the real estate. You've got ours where they have got the question before you, and you've got Bristol with a $100,000 exemption. So certainly, a full exemption is a reasonable expectation based on what the practice is across the state. But I also think that there may well be just as much justification for some type of a payment in lieu of taxes if that was appropriate for both the organization and from the council's viewpoints.
And if whichever route we decide to go, is it a decision that's made on a yearly basis?
I think if you put it through the ordinance, it would be, and it would be, going forward, there wouldn't be changes that were necessary unless there was a repeal of the ordinance. So you could repeal the ordinance in the future, but if you didn't take any action on the ordinance, it would go from year to year, like all of the other tax exemptions that are out there. With pilot agreements, pilot agreements are renewed on a yearly basis based on our ordinance.
And in reference to the 501(c)(8) with Masonic Temple, I believe the Masonic Temple in town is tax exempt, or is that a pilot agreement?
I'm not sure whether there was c8 or not, but the Elks is a domestic fraternal beneficiary society. That's what the c8 is here. I'm not sure what specific reference there is for the other organization. I think it may be the same.
But Masonic Temple is tax exempt as well?
That's correct.
Yeah. We do. Do you know the exact location of the Masonic Temple? Do you know the exact location of the Masonic Temple, Mason's?
Columbia Street.
Columbia Street.
Are they considered a fraternal organization?
Yes, they're exempt.
They are tax exempt.
They're exempt.
Full tax exemption.
They have a full tax exemption?
Yeah.
That was put into effect, tore down the last temple and built the new one. I'm not sure how many years ago that was.
So just for the record, I could tonight go for the full tax exemption, but I want to be courtesy, have courtesy to the rest of the town council members, and I think the route that we're taking is to bring it back to the table the next meeting with both the pay-in lieu of taxes. And maybe somebody can come from the Elks to that meeting and speak, and Steve meet with them, as well as providing Mike to prepare an ordinance. Is that the route that we want to take?
I think it would be nice to have somebody here from the Elks, just to give us some background in what they do. Not that we don't already know of all the great work that they do, but it's certainly always recommended. I think it would be nice. It certainly would be compelling, let's put it that way.
So is that the route that we want, to bring it to the next meeting with two avenues we could possibly take, pay in lieu of taxes, as well as the full tax exemption according to the public law?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the Elks.
You want me to make contact with them and meet with them in advance of that meeting, or do you want to just have them come to the meeting? That's not what you just said.
I think both, yeah. I think if you meet with them, and then they could come and present to the town council as well.
Fine, we'll try to set up an appointment.
Alright.
If we could put it on for the next meeting, Steve, I mean, and have somebody come, right.
Yeah, the ordinance is going to take all of a paragraph. It's just going to take the language right out of the state statute, which you would adopt from. If we can get a meeting with them before the next meeting, then at least we could present what concerns they would have if there was a pilot in place.
Well, I don't even know if we have concerns, but I think it's, best practice is for anyone who would, is qualified for a tax exemption, should come forward and give us their spiel on what great things they do for the community.
Alright, so you want us not to meet with them at that?
Well, no, you can meet with them too, you know.
Invite them.
Perfect.
Sure, yes. Do you have a motion? Let's see, what is the motion? I move that we continue this to the next meeting, refer it back to Steve and Mike to make arrangements for the possibility of the tax exemption versus the pilot payment in lieu of taxes, and ask somebody from the Elks to come and address the town council. Thanks.
And Mike will prepare the ordinance.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're good, Colleen? Okay, at this time, we are at comments from interested citizens. And if anyone would like to come to the microphone? Steve Corley, welcome. How are you?
Good, I'm Steve Corley, West Kingston. I just wanted to thank the new members and the old members for serving on the town council. The biggest reason I came here today is I happened to see it in the, we're talking about telephone poles on Rose Hill, on Stony Fort Road. Pole number 912, down towards the 138 end. It's literally right on the edge of the road, on a sharp corner. And when people are coming at you, they tend to cut the corner, and it leaves you no place to go. I've already hit my brake once. I saw a tractor pulling a hay rake, they had to stop quick, and it's just, if... The telephone company said the town has to pay to move it, that's what they told me. I don't know how true that is or not, but I know nothing's cheap, but I think it's worth moving that pole. And I was looking at the capital budget, and Watson Road would be a nice road to get paved, if that could be considered. Watson Road's next to the West Kingston post office. And I saw that Sagatucket Road, if we're going to do some work on Sagatucket Road, it'd be nice to widen the bridge that's between Broad Rock and Rose Hill, if that would be possible. And you're going to get ready to talk about the budgets and all that, you've started that process. I would hope that you would consider raising the car exemption above its current $3,000 level. It's a very regressive tax, and I think that try to work that number up till we can get someday to maybe a $10,000 or $15,000 exemption would be a nice, like I say, it's a truly, it's a very regressive tax. I've had tenants that have kept their out-of-state license for the whole year, whatever, they've lived with me. If you make me pay as a landlord, eventually I will be able to collect that money and pay you that money. You're getting ready to talk with the school department. Couple of years ago, we were talking about shutting down a school beside South Road. We're now talking about having South Road open. They said that they can do that for no money, so that to me, that means that there shouldn't be any money in the capital budget for maintenance of that building, that should come out of their other funds. And if we could have saved, at one number, at one time, the number was over $800,000 by shutting one of the elementary schools, and now we're going to have two open. They were able to operate the school system, they had a plan to be able to operate with two less schools, it just seems a waste of money. If they were coming to me personally and saying, "Hey, we want a million dollars to buy 1,000 computers, and, you know, computerize our classrooms," I'd say yay. But just to keep more buildings open, it just seems not a good use of money. And the last thing would be Plains Road. The university's doing a lot of work on Plains Road. Stony Fort Road has now been fixed up real nice, and it's a nice cut-through. And I would encourage you to let Plains Road go to hell. Potholes are great, slows people down. You can rip out the Plains Road bridge if you want, and I'll drive around. But I have a concern, we start talking about economic park and all that kind of stuff, about increased traffic through there, no real plan for how that traffic's going to flow. And the last, if not least, would be economic development. Council of the state basically was able to issue $112 million worth of bond without that go into public referendum. That's going to affect the amount of money that is needed from the town, essentially being that the state won't have funds to disperse to the towns, or will be required to pay more taxes. I'd like to, maybe the town council to think about objecting to repayment of those, to those bonds, which officially were effectively issued without there being a referendum to the citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from interested citizens? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Sweeney, and I'm here tonight to introduce the Ocean State Baseball Organization to the council. The Ocean State Waves was recently accepted into the New England Collegiate Baseball League, which is a member of 13 other teams, including the Newport Gulls, that play over at Cardine's Field in Newport. The Ocean State Waves is a nonprofit Rhode Island corporation, and it would facilitate collegiate baseball at one of the highest levels in the country. And our proposal to the town, to the recreation commission, is to bring a team here and play at Old Mountain Field as our home field. We've been working with Terry Murray and Rex Eberle and the Rec Commission on making sure that that schedule does not displace any of the town organizations that currently preside on that field, and it appears as though that has been solved. We do have some, a couple of logistics that we're still working out. Our proposal is basically to do some facility upgrades to Old Mountain Field, and we're just working with the Rec Commission on making sure that all of those things are in line. The roster is comprised of 30 collegiate players, come from all over the country. The rules for the league are that no more than four players from any one collegiate team beyond that team, so you have a smattering of players from all over the country. They would stay locally with host families, and they would likely work in the community during the mornings. We were proposing to organize some local camps, and these kids are, they're all driven collegiate athletes, and, you know, we feel that they would serve as great role models to the community. The schedule is, starts at June 6th, it's outside of the high school schedule, starts June 6th and runs till early August. We play a schedule of 44 games, 22 of them being home games. The expected attendance at our games would be anywhere from 400 to 600 patrons. Our goal would be to charge a $4 admission for adults, and $2 for kids under 12 would be free. And we would plan to just create two points of entry, one down by the basketball court and one up at the top of the parking lot, and just funnel two entrances into an area where tickets could be purchased. Our intent is not to encapsulate the entire field, so that, you know, we're not going to hunt anybody down if they don't pay, so to speak. I think that's it.
Any questions, Carol?
Where are you going to practice, Jeff?
We don't practice. We, they practice all year, they play 44, they're basically playing six days a week. So three days would be on the road, three days would be at home, more or less. There is a, there is a practice that goes along with the pre-game, so, you know, it would be similar to if you were at the Paw Sox or at Fenway, where, you know, a couple hours before the game, you do on-field batting practice, and then, you know, there's an infield-outfield component, while the other, the visiting team is bussed in. And we're working with, we're working with the Rec Commission on parking. All of our players and staff would park at the high school and walk over, and we've been working on a couple of different ideas, valet parking, utilizing the back entrance around the, along behind the outfield as additional parking.
Now, you said 400 to 600 patrons per game?
That's what we hope.
Wow, that's wonderful. I can see parking could be an issue, but to sell tickets, you won't, so you said you won't be encapsulating the whole field, will you be putting up any more fencing than already there?
We would do a little bit of fencing in the outfield, just to correct the dimensions, so to speak. Old Mountain's a little bit of a unique configuration, so we would do a little bit of fencing, and it would actually create a large area in left field that we envision being like a corporate picnic area. But no additional fencing, other than two little funnel fences, you know, eight feet wide, to sort of corral people into a ticket purchase area.
And what other kind of upgrades would you be doing to the field?
Our proposal is to build a new press box on top of the first base dugout.
New press box?
Correct.
One there now?
Yeah, and replace the small one that's there now. Our, the requirement of the league is that our games would have to be video-streamed and available online. We have a full-time broadcaster and a whole music section, so it would require a larger press box than the one that Terry Lynch can barely fit in now.
And would you, now, are you in the process of recruiting now for June, or is that how you go about this?
Yep, yep. The roster is created more so by college coaches contacting us than we contacting players. It's all about the collegiate coaches putting their players in a position to succeed at a level that they think that they can play at.
And you would travel, apparently, to play other games? How far would you reach, do you think?
As far north as Sanford, Maine, and as far south as Saratoga Springs, New York.
And obviously, the kids have to pay some kind of tuition to do this, or no?
No, the kids don't pay. Our, the, none of the collegiate summer teams, there's probably 30 of them around the country, and the kids don't pay. The way the budget is made up is through corporate sponsorship and ticket sales.
So we'd have signs probably on the fencing at Old Mountain Field?
Correct. Now, that was part of our proposal to the Rec Commission, was to, you know, put up, we did a PowerPoint presentation with them, showing the type of signs and the uniformity of the signs, and the professionalism of the signs, so that it doesn't look, so that it looks professional.
How about the stands? Would you increase stands, or, we have very limited stands over there, I think.
Yeah, that's part of the appeal to Old Mountain, is the, sort of the natural embankment that's there. A lot of blankets and chairs, and sitting on the rocks, and our proposal right now is not to increase the stands.
And no game on 4th of July, you understand that, right? We need it for the fireworks.
Right, correct.
Sounds great.
I did have a question. I did read the article in the journal, and I would say it was very, very impressive, and hats off and kudos to what you want to accomplish here, because I'm very proud of baseball. The question I had is, in terms of the field, maintenance of the field and upgrades of the field, specifically, I think I read something about the pitcher's mound had to be changed, and there was some dynamics that would have to be changed. Would all of that money for these upgrades come out of the capital budget for the organization that you want to establish?
That's correct. We would rebuild the mound, we'd rebuild the batter's box, rebuild most of the infield, and that would be, that would be included in our budget. We would also be taking over the maintenance of the infield, and all that we've asked of Rex's crew is just to cut the grass. We're also, as a league requirement, would be required to purchase a field tarp, which is 120 feet by 120 feet, which would cover the entire infield in the event of rain. So all things that will, you know, benefit the facility for all the other users.
Great. Okay, Jim?
Jeff, what about the minimum foul poles, right and left field? What's the minimum for the league standards?
There really isn't a standard, but Old Mountain is quite a bit larger than just about any field, especially left field. Left field is...
Forever.
375, whereas 325 would be typical.
As Meg said, the article, the paper certainly generated a number of phone calls, and from an economic development standpoint, this sounds exciting, and hopefully you can work things out with Terry and her team. And God, I look forward to June 6th, going to be a ribbon-cutting too. Throw out the first ball.
Get your arm ready, Jim, you'll be throwing the first pitch out.
Alright, thank you for the information, and just as Jim said, we will wait to hear from the Recreation Commission, Terry. Steve?
Just a couple of comments. Everything that Jeff said, 100%. We've given a temporary approval for the use of the fields at this point, which is the standard agreement that the Recreation Commission would provide. There's still yet to be determined, some negotiations to have to deal with as far as refinement on the parking, traffic, the field upgrades, admissions, and the banners. That's all going back to the Recreation Commission after Terry gets done, Terry and Rex get done dealing with Jeff on 22nd. So as of now, they've got the standard rental application has been approved, so that we can move forward, because we certainly want to make sure that they can start their season at the time that they need to. But at the same time, there has to be refinement on several of those issues. Some of them may be experimental in nature. Traffic issues may be one that we have to deal with after we've had some games there, to see whether or not there's impact, and may require some type of police security in terms of road monitoring. The issue of attendance, we have other activities, both basketball, tennis activities are ongoing at Old Mountain Field. The game time uses is really from 2:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 at night, so it spans a long period of time, so we have to have certain areas of the 112 spaces that we have available at Old Mountain Field, that would be available for those other activities that are scheduled during the same time in the park. So it's an exciting proposition, one that we certainly want to work with, but there still are some things that'll need to be refined to ensure that we've got both safety for everybody, and are dealing with the concerns that some of the businesses may have if we start having overflow parking issues in close proximity. Same type of problem we've run into with the 4th of July, but hopefully not to that extent. to that, at that extent. Uh, but if we were looking at four to four hundred people for each of the games, it certainly would have, uh, have impact. The use of the high school in terms of the parking for the teams and the team support activities certainly makes a lot of sense, but, uh, what Terry needs to do at this point is to get those things down on paper to make Rec Commission comfortable as far as how the final agreements will work. As I say, I think most of it is gonna be experimental during the first year, and then there'll be modifications that may be necessary thereafter. But, uh, certainly, everybody's looking forward to moving forward with the, with the program as presented.
Carol?
Steve, and maybe Terry has the answer here. I know from when my son was younger, the, uh, the Legion used to play over at, uh, Old Mountain Field, Babe Ruth used to play there. They'll still have the ability to schedule their games?
Legion's still, uh, using the field, uh, on, uh, on different days. What we had to do was to take a look at the, uh, facility schedules for all of the different activities there, and Legion's still there, seven to nine, uh, several days a week.
Mm-hmm. And we also have the softball fields over there, right?
Yeah, there's slow pitch there every night.
Mm-hmm.
That's why there's, there's a...
Busy, busy place.
...activity that goes on in that, uh, in, in that field, and certainly brings a great deal of people into Wakefield.
Any other comments from interested citizens? Am I just, Jim?
Yeah, um, before our regular meeting this evening, we had a chance to meet with the, uh, few members of, uh, South Kingstown's, uh, House and Senate delegations. And, um, I, I wanted to thank, uh, Carol McEntee for bringing up an issue, and I was, I was hoping we'd have some discussion with it at the Town Council, uh, table tonight, but, um, obviously, the community is, uh, certainly underway with a conversation about guns, ammunition, and, and just, uh, what's going to happen at, in Washington, as well as Providence and here. And I'm hoping Carol, uh, can put together, after a conversation with, um, our House and Senate folks this evening, and hopefully she can, uh, engage a conversation with us, bring forward a resolution, and, um, so I look forward to, uh, that discussion, and certainly look forward to, uh, trying to understand this issue a whole lot better and, um, relieve a lot of anxiety that we see amongst, uh, the populace. So, Carol, I'm gonna leave that one in your hands.
Thanks, Jim. And I will, uh, consult with our esteemed chief on this matter, since he's the expert.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just have a few dates. I don't know if, um, you wanna make note, Town Councilor? There's a few dates that we have to schedule. But, January sixteenth, this Wednesday, we have our joint Town Council School Committee Capital Improvement Program Work Session, starting at six-thirty. We also, um, I got a phone call from Kevin Quinn, Deputy Chief, um, stating that the Union Fire District Awards Ceremony will take place on February sixth, so there'll be invitations coming. If you could put that on your calendars, February sixth, um, it's their awards ceremony. We also need to come up with a date. We got a letter from Laurie Fish, Chair of the Economic Development Committee, looking to meet. So, I don't know if we can get that done tonight, and also need a date for the Planning Board, to look at some reviews of the comprehensive plan. Then I wanted to remind Town Council members that the Washington County Regional Planning Session Two on the Hasenfeld Institute will take place on January twenty-sixth, up at Bryant University, from eight to three. And there are accommodations, if you'd like to check in the night before. So, at this point, I don't know if it's part of your report, Steve, should we try to come up with some dates for EDC and Planning Board? I mean, while you're getting calendars or proceeding in that direction, um, I just want to, I'm looking forward to the police promotions and the swearing-in at our next Town Council meeting with Captain Joel Yuen Chow and Sergeant Montefiore Houghton, hopefully I pronounced that right, and from the Detective Division Sergeant Alfred Pucco, and two new police officers, um, Officer Evan Johnson and Officer Kevin J. Rinn. So, we look forward to that. So, do you wanna try to get some dates, or?
That's fine, if that's what the council wants to do.
Let me pick some. So, do we need one meeting with the Planning Board to start, and then maybe, maybe plan it, and one for Economic Development?
I think the best thing that you could do is to come up with, uh, three different dates, the councils available. We can offer those dates to Planning Board and to Economic Development Committee and try to fit, uh, fit them into your time schedules, but, uh, you know, I think that the best thing for you to do is to collectively come up with three dates that I can offer, and then we'll, uh, get the meeting scheduled from there. I would assume that you're looking at, uh, February, uh, for the meeting, is, is that correct?
Right, so do you want to suggest a few, and...
If you give me the dates, as long as the council, uh, has no difficulty with those dates, we'll, uh, deal with the, uh, board chairs for each of the committees.
Okay, um, I will be away from January thirty-first to February eighth. Not to say that you could have a meeting without me.
Without you. Why don't we pick some later? I don't even have my, uh, work schedule, uh, with me.
I know March gets really busy with all the...
I could just say yes to anything.
Yeah, well, if we can come up with tentative, and then if we get back to Steve. Otherwise, what, the next meeting that we have is January twenty-eighth, and we'll be picking dates, and we received two letters.
The week of February eighteenth looks pretty light, but...
That's a Town Council legislative meeting, a meeting with the legislators as well.
When is that?
That's the February eighteenth. We also have a follow-up meeting with the legislators.
February eighteenth is a holiday. It says right here.
Oh, yeah, President's Day.
Did we move, did we move that to the twenty-fifth, I think?
We didn't move that, that is the fourth, fourth Monday.
I think we moved that to the twenty-fifth, thank you. All right, so I'm just gonna...
Do you have a legislative meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, and with a Town Council meeting, again, starting at six, and we'll probably start like we did similar today. All right, so, uh, we have a Town Council meeting on the eleventh, so we have nothing on the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, the following, nineteenth, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
I'm gonna say no to the fourteenth. Hopefully, we all have something we should do.
I could be here.
I second that.
How about nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one?
All right.
Yeah, that's good.
Have two of those three days. If those three days you can, uh, I can give to, uh, to the boards, so it'll be the nineteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-first, we'll have his whole dates right now.
Okay.
All right, that sounds good.
And, and if you want it to, from, for benefit, I mean, the following Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, is open twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Well, let's try these three.
But do we really want, if Economic Development says nineteenth, and then Planning Board says the twentieth, do we want back-to-back meetings, two nights? That's what I'm saying. Because we do have, all right, so if you want to do that, nineteenth, twenty, or twenty-one, first?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a plan.
Just those three dates you want to offer at this point?
Thank you. Which brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
You already gave it.
Must have something.
I yield to the solicitor.
I have probably given it in the second session.
Okay, which brings us to appointments, and I believe we have one.
Let's see, I move that we reappoint William Wallace as a tree warden for the town of South Kingstown for the year of two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And do we have a number of years, or how many, how many years has Bill Wallace been doing this?
Is he even close to birdie poppy, or not?
He came with the town's first tree.
All right. And I believe we have a few other appointments.
We also have two more appointments for the Assessment Board of Review. Uh, Mark Ashenbow's term expired in January of two thousand and thirteen. Uh, I move that we reappoint him for three years, which will take him to January two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Also, for the Assessment Board of Review, William Salerno, his term expired January of two thousand and thirteen. I move we appoint him for another three-year period to January two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Next item on the agenda is New Business Item C. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Easton Industrial Automation, eight sixty-two Eddie Street, Providence, Rhode Island, to remove and dispose of an existing sludge belt and furnish and install a new sludge conveyor belt at the South Kingstown Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility, in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, including a three thousand contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager dated December twentieth, two thousand and twelve, and entitled "Bid Recommendation Waste Water: Furnish and Install New Sludge Conveyor Belt."
Five bids were received for the replacement on the conveyor belt. Lowest qualified bidder is Easton Industrial Automation at the twelve-five, plus the contingency, as presented in John's memorandum of December twentieth.
Move approval then of New Business Item C. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item E is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Fuss and O'Neil, three seventeen Iron Horse Way, Suite two thousand and four, Providence, Rhode Island, for Narrow River, total maximum daily wa, load, storm water consulting engineering services, in amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, including a twenty thousand dollar contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, dated January third, two thousand and thirteen, and entitled Narrow River, Petticoat Skid River, Total Maximum Daily Load, Analysis Engineering Services Recommendation.
John's memo of, uh, January third, uh, provides the background information relative to the, uh, state DEM, uh, citing the town for seven different, uh, total maximum daily load, uh, concerns at, uh, several different pond locations and water body locations. As noted in, uh, John's memorandum, the first step in terms of dealing with, uh, reducing, uh, pollution loading is to deal with the oldest of the, uh, TMDLs, which goes back to the, uh, fecal coliform in the Narrow River, which was first, uh, referenced in two thousand and one. There were three proposals that were submitted, uh, these were pre-qualified consultants that have background, uh, work in terms of storm water management. Uh, the, the lowest qualified presenter was Fuss and O'Neil. The, uh, Fuss and O'Neil, at this time, the design, uh, phase will cost us eighty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. If we go to construction with the best management practices that they propose, uh, after the completion of the design, we're estimating another twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars in construction management, seven hundred and fifty dollars in, uh, resident inspection on a daily basis, for a total over thirty days of around twenty-two-five. So, overall, just of the design and engineering would be about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars toward the solution. But, as John notes, we do not anticipate that we will ever be able to reduce the, uh, the bacterial loading that occurs in Narrow River with any of the works that we would do, uh, because many of the sources of pollution are not, uh, man-made, nor are they storm water carries. Uh, most of those would be directly related to waterfall. We do have a requirement to move forward with continuing this effort. We have, within the Capital Improvement Program, appropriated a hundred thousand dollars a year, both last year and going forward over the next six years, uh, to be used toward TMDL, uh, mitigation. Uh, this will be the first brick-and-mortar study that will be done, but as John has cautioned, and I will caution, uh, you again, we expect that these are gonna be very, very expensive, uh, public works projects, and we are concerned that normally, when we take a public works project forward to you, we anticipate that we're going to be able to get, uh, uh, get a good bang for the buck. In these cases, we're concerned that we're going to make, uh, major financial expenditures and not be able to achieve the, uh, load reductions that would, uh, would be necessary to, uh, take this off of the TMDL list. But, uh, as noted, we've had several meetings with EPA representatives out of Boston, as well as DEM. We feel that the course of action to begin to demonstrate, uh, positive actions without meaningful results may in fact reduce what our, uh, what our expenditures are going down the road, as we get to more expensive concerns outside of the Narrow River. So, uh, I will recommend to you that you award the contract with Fuss and O'Neil as presented. Uh, once we get through the design phase, uh, we'll be looking at probable construction costs, which will then be incorporated into the Capital Improvement Program, which you review on a yearly basis.
Thank you, Steve. Carol?
I read John's memo, and thank you, John, but, I mean, this is very upsetting. The, uh, Rhode Island DEM and the U.S. EPA officials conceded that even after the town designed and constructed stormwater structural best manager, management practices, we would still not be able to meet water quality standards, and it's non-human sources. I can understand if it's sources that we're contaminating, we should clean, but, uh, what about this reclassification, that the, uh, the water bodies need to be reclassified, John? Could you, uh, speak to that, or Steve? I mean, it just seems like if we're just gonna keep throwing good money after bad and not getting anywhere with it, not achieving the result, I mean, obviously, we could, we need the money elsewhere, schools, uh, municipality, roads, uh, I mean, to say, to spend this kind of money on something that we can't control, uh, it's very frustrating to me, it's gonna be frustrating to you. And I don't see the purpose in it, other than we're regulated to do so.
Well, part of the problem that the, the, the argument that the regulators make is, is that the town has facilitated, um, pollution of the surface water bodies by our drainage systems and by, uh, impervious surfaces. So, even though we believe, and in the case of Green Hill Pond, I, the, uh, the DNA source typing that was done there was about seventy-two or seventy-three percent was non-anthropogenic, we've allowed, through permitting development, the conveyance of the polluted stormwater to the surface water body, that, and it's that argument that they make to us, uh, that we have to go and make these structural BMPs. Now, will there be an improvement? I think there will be, but is it gonna be a five percent improvement or a fifty percent improvement? I don't have that number for you. But I think anything we will do will be a benefit, but it's not going to get the water back to fishable, swimmable status, and we cannot request a, a use-tainment analysis until we make a legitimate effort to make these structural improvements. So, we're kinda caught in a catch-twenty-two, and it is an expensive endeavor.
And what about the reclassification, John? I mean, we have to take these steps to even get to that point?
Yeah, EPA, we had that specific discussion with them, and they would not consider what's called a UAA, a use-tainment analysis, to, since it seems to be a foregone conclusion that if we make these improvements, the water still will not meet water quality standards. So, we requested to, uh, be able to prepare a UAA to, to ask that the water be reclassified, and EPA indicated that they would not consider such an analysis until we made a good-faith effort through structural improvements to try and clean up some of the stormwater.
So, if we start this project, this could be the end of it? They could then see that we, we can't control all of this, and...
Well, I think what we're gonna do is, I mean, Narragansett's done, I believe, two out of, they've probably have about ten or fifteen outfalls. They've done, I believe, two or three outfalls. This is, we're proposing to probably do two or three, I think we have eight down in, in the Middle Bridge area. And once we finish with these improvements, our hope is then to go on to the next TMDL, which I believe is the Sogatucket River, make some improvements here and get through all the seven TMDLs. Now, maybe twenty years from now, they'll come back after more... Now, maybe 20 years from now, they'll come back after more sampling has been done and say, okay, you may have to keep going. We may have to make more stormwater improvements in Narrow River, but that may be quite a bit down the road. I think they're going to have us go through the others, all seven, and then come back and reevaluate to see if more needs to be done.
So when you talk about the most expensive public works program in the history of the town, I mean, what are we looking at over the long haul?
Until you do the best management practices on each of the seven TMDLs, you're not going to have a price. But if you start looking at the necessity to buy large tracts of land to be able to prevent or to detain the water before it gets to a water body, or to act as a filtration area, then the cost could be considerable. But, you know, we can't tell you what those costs would be. I think what we're trying to do is to demonstrate good faith with the two agencies, and then to say, there has to be a better way of doing this. But where we ran into the brick wall was, their point to us is, well, you haven't done anything to demonstrate that you can't accomplish what we want you to accomplish.
But they conceded, that they don't think you can.
Yes, they have, but they want to see what type of a measured improvement occurs with the steps that we take.
And then will they lower their requirements possibly?
I don't see that they are going to simply reduce the requirements. I think what happens is then becomes the second iteration as to what other practices are possible that may take the 10% reduction to a 15% level. And again, our concern always is that if we're dealing with only a very small portion of the overall pollution, we could have 100% accomplished and still be well over what the standards are. And the real question is whether DEM's level of attainment requirement is astronomically high and unattainable. And then it's a case where, once we show this, we feel that we can then go back to the agency, particularly through the director's office, and say, you need to take a look at what these attainment requirements are, because they're unrealistic. We're not alone in dealing with this. On any of the roads where there's state highways involved, state DOT has been listed as a responsible party for cleaning up those areas as well. So what we have to see is, how would we collaborate with those other groups? But as far as Narrow River is concerned, I mean, we've brought in public water, we've brought in public sewer. We've made substantial progress over the last 30 years to clean that area, and so too is Narragansett. So there's been substantive things dealt with for the anthropogenic sources of pollution there. But we certainly are not able to deal with the wildlife population, which is something that we continue to go back to DEM and say, you should be responsible for. So...
And how do you assess which town is responsible for the pollution of Narrow River? I mean, it's right down the middle, isn't it?
Right down the middle, but it's also North Kingston that would be involved, too. So, you know, there's a number of parties that would be responsible. Any place that's got stormwater runoff, that's going across open lands or through a closed pipe system, would be responsible if they could prove that there was pollution, in this case bacterial pollution, coming through any of those outfalls. So we need to make the next step, but we want to place on record our concerns that it will not attain the end that everybody would hope to see.
Well, I mean, if we're going to spend the money and we make some improvement, but when it comes to a point where we can no longer make an improvement because it's not a human condition, I don't know where we go at that point. Hopefully, there'll be some relief.
That's where we have to go back to the agencies and say, we have made the responsible efforts. As I said the other night with the capital budget, we do have responsibility to attempt to deal with the anthropogenic sources of pollution. And we will be doing that with this effort. But as we go forward, we can't just say, okay, we're going to do best management practices as far as stormwater is concerned on the Narrow River, and then have them come back and say, well, what's Phase Two going to be, because you've only accomplished a 5% reduction? At that point, we've got to go back and say, is there a reasonable expectation that we can do more than what we've already had as far as the use attainment? But we can't look at that until we get through this first step.
What percent reduction are they looking for, Steve? 100%?
90, about 90%.
Not for the, I just can't remember off the top of my head. It's significant. It's going to be far in excess on what we're able to achieve with this. But again, this is a first step. Hopefully, we can make some substantive reductions, but I can't stand here and tell you what that reduction's going to be.
Well, thank you. And each one is going to cost approximately the same to...
No, I think...
Absolutely not. Some are going to be much more expensive. When you look down the list, and you look at Green Hill Pond, and you look at Indian Run, Indian Run with the dissolved metals, copper, zinc, and lead, could be outrageously expensive for both DOT and the town of South Kingston, because here, what they're talking about with Indian Run is next to the Bolin Alley, where each of the drainage systems come all the way from Route 1 down Old Tower Hill Road, from the restaurant, the old 108 house down. All of that is one catchment area. So you've got a lot of impervious surface there, and an awful lot of road salts, oils, and lubricants that would be resident to the stormwater. So some of those could be quite expensive. You know, some of the other ones, such as the phosphorus at Barbara's Pond, Niago, and Chickasine, may not have a high cost, but the pollution's coming from outside of the community. So then the question comes down is, are we responsible for it because it's resident in our community, or is the polluting potty responsible? So there's a number of those different things that will have to be evaluated, but no, there's no universal rule as to what the cost would be. A lot of it is if it's land-based. If we can use the road network that we have and be able to put in the retention areas within the right-of-way and not have to acquire property, there would be significant savings. In some areas, we're not going to have the road width based on the topography that would be able to address that, which may mean that if you were going to service it, you would need to service it by purchasing property. And again, when you deal with Green Hill Pond, you're dealing with Charleston as well, which has duty and responsibility based on its inflow from its side of the pond. So it's not going to be a simple solution. Point Judith Pond?
Is this something we should have brought up with the legislators, do you think? Could they have helped us with this at all?
We have met with the legislators, we've met in the governor's office on this issue as well. The real issue here is, this isn't really a state mandate. This is from the 1972 Clean Water Act, and this is what we're dealing with. Now, the state's interpretation on how to deal with TMDLs may differ from some other states, but at the same time, they're going under federal legislation, and if they are not in compliance with it, EPA will take steps with them.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, Steve or John, is there a possibility here that we may have to fund all seven of these before we even have results back on Narrow River, or some of the earlier ones? I mean, are we looking at a few million dollars we may have to put out there?
I would doubt that you'll have the studies done on all seven of those in any time in the immediate future.
Yeah, we, subsequent to our meetings with EPA and DEM, I met with the state officials, and, you know, my position was, because we have so many of these to deal with, my preference was to work on one, knock one out, rather than sprinkling the limited funding we have over seven. So the regulators agree with that in concept, and that's why we're starting with Narrow River, because that's the oldest one. So we want to get Narrow River done, get it behind us, and then start working on the next. And, you know, this is not going to be a quick process, because we need permitting for this. The design's got to get done, we're going to get permitting. In the permitting process, I would suspect is probably going to be at least a year. That's what similar, what Narragansett went through for their ones, their improvements and pediclimb skip.
A little frightening, a legacy, we may be leaving taxpayers down the line, but Carol's right on this. I mean, are they going to keep moving the carrot further and further out, the goal line further and further out, so we're just going to be, and if we show good faith, does that trap us versus other communities that may say, hey, take us to court?
I don't think it does, Jim. I think that if we don't take appropriate steps, we could end up where there would be compliance orders that would come forward that may be much more deleterious to our financial position than for us attempting to meet what we see. I would rather be in court defending the fact that we've taken responsible actions as a public agency, rather than to simply say, we're not going to deal with it because we think it's too expensive. Because I think that if we go about it on the process that we've laid out for you, that we're building a better defense as we go forward, once we're able to prove that we're not being successful. And hopefully, that will have impact on the remaining TMDLs that we have yet to provide best management practice opportunities for.
I'm just worried that this could make the Superfund costs look quite small.
I think it will. I think it will, when you look out 20 or 30 years, Jim, I think it could. You know, Superfund provided us with, you know, improvements that were about $25 million, of which we spent less than $5 million. Here, there's no deep pocket outside of the communities.
Us, yep.
So, you know, and I think that the other thing is that, and we've mentioned it in the past, is that South Kingston has the dubious honor of having seven TMDLs. We're probably leading, we know we're leading in the state and possibly in the country as far as the number of TMDLs in one small community. Some of that is the direct result of being the host of the University of Rhode Island, where we provide greater opportunity for review and testing of water quality. Some of it is, I think, TMDLs are catching up with the state.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, I'm not aware of too many cities or towns right now that have not got TMDLs listed for them, particularly that Erosion front. And I think what DEM has done is to be working up. We think our difficulties are severe. I think when you start dealing with the city of Walworth's problems that they're going to have with the ponds there, they're going to be significant as well. But if we don't show some good faith, I'm not sure we're able to defend our future action. We had filed an action plan with the state last year as part of our compliance requirements, and indicated that we would take the first step with Narrow River. And with the other ones, we gave dates that were pretty far out, scheduled, I think, going out as far as 15 or 20 years. So that's, our attempt is to try to be able to properly evaluate one which we've got the most data on, and then see where we go from there.
And just as an aside, we have already received a notice of intent to enforce from DEM. And the reason is, is because they're waiting for the structural TMDL. So hopefully, now that we move forward with this, that will get us a bye on that, could be pending enforcement action.
The enforcement notice was one that we've discussed with the director's office, and, you know, we really believe that the action that we took subsequent to the meeting that we had with them is the reason why we're not seeing the enforcement threat go forward at this point.
I just have one more question. You said that Narragansett had already started on their project for the TMDLs.
Narragansett, I believe, has done two, if not three, improvements. One is, if you go down Bridgetown Road and you go over the bridge, on the right-hand, on the left-hand side before you go up the hill, there's a big stormwater improvement feature there, that's one of them. I think there's another one up in...
Has it made a difference?
I spoke with the Narragansett town engineer, and as a, DEM did not require them to do post-construction monitoring. So once they made the improvements, they did not require them to do any post-construction monitoring.
Wow, that doesn't make sense to me.
John, it's okay. John, would it help with any of these, I know that some of them it wouldn't work with, with any of these to try to get some oyster farms set up in there to try to do some cleanup?
Well, I think the problem is Narrow River, and I believe Point Judith Pond, they're classified, and Green Hill Pond, they're classified as SA, which is salt water, A being the best quality, and that's the problem we have. We can't get the SA, the water quality up to an SA standard because of the upstream pollutants that are coming into the ponds. And I'm not aware that oysters in and of themselves would cleanse the water of the pollutants. And I don't know if DEM would accept, I don't want to speak for them, I don't know if they would accept that as a possible solution, because the pollutants are still getting into the pond. That's just more method of treatment. That's not, they're looking to see removal of pollutant load before it gets to the surface water body.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready for a motion? New Business Item E.
I move approval of New Business Item E, although reluctantly.
Thank you, John. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to box together New Business Item H and I. H is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Ferry Construction Company, 2 Pellamway North, Providence, Rhode Island, for construction of 10 dugout roofs at the Broad Rock Playfields and Curtis Corner Playfields, in accordance with all bid specifications, in amount not to exceed $50,000, including a 2,000 contingency. And I is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Lowe's Companies Incorporated, 100 Lowe's Boulevard, Mooresville, North Carolina, for dugout roof materials in accordance with all bid specifications, in amount not to exceed $11,032, including a 1,000 contingency, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services, for both H and I to the Town Manager dated January 2, 2013.
I think you can see that there's four resolutions, two of them are CAID, and two of them are on the agenda tonight as council actions that are necessary. Essentially, we've got 10 ball fields in South Kingston, both at Curtis Corner and at Broad Rock, where the dugouts were constructed without any roofings. We have, since 2008, 2009 year, put money into the capital budget to provide for roofing on both of the facilities. We also received a grant to be able to do the work. Overall, funding availability right now is $66,000. In 2011, we first went out to bid on the project, and we broke the project out into two components. One was the construction, and two was the acquisition of the lumber required for the contractor to use. This way, we wouldn't be paying mock-up prices on the lumber or the carrying costs with the construction company that will be doing the work. The bids tonight, we're asking for those back in 2011 to be rejected, and what we've gone out is to a second bid with revised bidding documents. With that revised bid, we then had to again do a revision as far as working with the three lowest bidders based on funding availability. Once that was done, we ended up where the lowest qualified bidder, after the revisions were made, was Ferry Construction. All three companies had the opportunity to bid on the revised specs. The prices were $48,000 with Ferry, Martone Services at $48.9, and Tower Construction was in at $71. So the recommendation now is the award with Ferry Construction, which is presented under Item H. Under Item I, we were purchasing the lumber in two different companies. One with Lowe's, which we're recommending under Item I, which would be at $11,032. And Item J, which was approved under the consent agenda, Sweet Lumber, was providing for additional lumber for us. Overall, with the rejection on the 11 bids, the approval on the 12... Overall, with the rejection on the eleven bids, the approval on the twelve revised bid, and the approval on the two lumber acquisitions, the projected cost of the project will be $63,753, or about $2,200 behind or below the available funding. So we would recommend the council take the actions for the approval on H and I as presented, along with the, the other two that went through the consent agenda.
Did the resolution reject on all bids? Was that on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you.
That was item, item, what's that, item G? G.
G, thank you. So...
No questions, then. I move approval of new business resolutions H and I.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business item K. This is a resolution authorizing a ward of contract to Wright Pierce, 10 Dorant Street, Providence, Rhode Island, for wastewater engineering, design, and construction. Management services amount now to exceed $75,000, including a $15,000 contingency, as further described in memorandum from the Director of Public Services to the Town Manager dated January 2nd, and entitled Designing, Construction, Engineering Services for Wastewater Improvements.
There are four projects within the capital improvement program, and I think we discussed most of them the other night. Silver Lake Pump Station, we've got a fourth pump that needs to be installed. The Kingston Pump Station, the generator set needs to be replaced. The headworks of the regional treatment plant, we need to do concrete wall improvements, and we need to replace the roof on the original section of the, the main building at the wastewater treatment plant. We sought to bring all four of those projects under one engineering contract. Proposals were solicited, three different consultants presented proposals for the lowest presented price for doing all four of the services, and the prices are delineated in John's January 2nd memorandum. Works out to a, a total price of $60,000, plus we've got a $15,000 contingency associated with those four individual projects. We would recommend the council award to Wright Pierce as presented in that memorandum.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item K. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business item L is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Carousel Industries, 659 South County Trail, Exeter, Rhode Island, for an Avaya IP office telephone system in accordance with all bid specifications and amount now to exceed $32,400, including contingency, trade-in allowance, and extended warranty coverage, 24/7, 365 days for years, two through five, and as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the Town Manager dated January 9th, 2013, entitled Bid Recommendation Telephone System Replacement Public Safety Complex.
As noted in the chief's memorandum, the recommendation is for the replacement of the total system with included a 24/7, 365-day coverage for the maintenance on the, the system once acquired, and we'll be paying for that warranty and parts and labor upfront for the total of the $30,935 with Carousel. The other two submitters of proposals had prices ranging from 34/7 to 36/7. We also looked at what the cost difference would be on an eight-to-five coverage rather than three, than 24/7. In other words, they would be available to fix the, the units any time that there was breakdown between eight and five in the day. Obviously, with a public safety facility, we need a 24/7 call feature, and we're looking to have that included in the price. So as presented in the chief's memo, $50,000 was made available for this project, and overall cost recommendation is at $32,400, of which $1,464 would be included as a contingency item for the project.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions, L, I move approval of new business resolution L.
I second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business item O is a resolution authorizing the extension of a ward of contract originally granted on July 9th, 2007, and amended on July 12th, 2010, July 11th, 2011, and July 12th, 2012, and September 24th, 2012, to WB Mason Company Incorporated, 99 Bald Hill Road, Cranston, Rhode Island, for general office supplies, standard paper and toner based on Rhode Island's Master Price Agreement, 105 through March 31st, 2013, and to further extend until a new bid is processed and awarded by the state, and as further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated January 10th, 2013, entitled Bid Recommendation Office Supplies.
As you can see, what we've changed on this resolution, which really goes back to 2007, is we write the state's master price agreement. Master price agreement is still under negotiation. What this says is that if they don't get done, this'll take us through March 31st, and if they're not done with the new contract by then, we don't have to bring it back to the council. It will just continue.
Good.
Good.
Please.
I move approval of new business item O.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a closed executive session, and before I read through this, I just want to congratulate this town council for getting through this agenda without a work, work session.
With what?
Without a work session.
Hey, so a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, Village Liquors LLC, Hang 10 LLC, and other outstanding litigation, in pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5 to discuss matters related to acquisition of or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition...